Okay, good evening. Uh, we are gonna ask, the fire marshal has asked, we can't have people standing in the aisles, so we're gonna have to ask people to sit. Uh, there are some seats, a few scattered seats here and there, uh, but we are gonna have to ask people to find a seat if you can, please.
That's his job now, he's kind of a maintenance, yeah. Yeah, I've known Scott for a while.
Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors' special meeting, April 30th, 2019. We're gonna begin with a salute to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Pullen, call the board, please, or take the role.
Mr. Galloway?
Here.
Mr. Brasky?
Here.
Mr. Farby?
Here.
Mr. Dent?
Here.
Mr. Rocko?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Um, tonight, as everybody knows, is a special meeting regarding the preliminary land development plan for Elcon, um, LLC. Tonight's agenda is, since it is only a one, uh, topic, or one item agenda, typically, for those that are used to the Board of Supervisors' meetings, we begin with public comment, which is for general items of interest. Uh, since there's only one item tonight, uh, we won't have, we won't be starting with public comment. Uh, we will begin, as we do, with all land development plans with the presentation from, uh, the applicant. Uh, board members and professionals for the township will have a chance to ask questions. Uh, we will then open for public comment, uh, and, uh, board action will follow. All right, so, um, Mr. Gray, would you wanna introduce the project? This is Elcon LLC, I don't know if Mrs. Fremeth, if your microphone's on?
Oh, there we go.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, good evening. Kim Fremeth here from Fox Rothschild, on behalf of Elcon Recycling Services, LLC. And with me this evening is Eric Garten to my left, he is from Gilmore and Associates, the civil engineer on the project. And to his left is Marjorie Fitzpatrick from IES Engineers, they are the environmental consultant for the project. I'd like to give the board a presentation. Uh, we did appear before the planning commission last month, uh, and I'd like to give the board a more thorough presentation, uh, so that the board and the public can see exactly what it is that we are proposing at the site and hopefully dispel any, um, misunderstandings as to what we are proposing. And, and the board should have copies of this PowerPoint, uh, in case you can't see it with the screen. So, the subject property is located at 100 Dean Seaver's Place, it's within the Keystone Industrial Port Complex, uh, and it's right here on the plan, uh, for those in the public that are looking on the screen, I'm highlighting it with a red dot. Uh, the property's approximately 32 acres and it's owned by US Steel. Elcon is the equitable owner of the property, meaning Elcon has the property under agreement to purchase the property. Uh, the US Steel plant, as probably most, all, everyone here would know, began steel production back in the 1950s on approximately 1,600 acres. The plant began to decline in the 1990s, forcing, forcing a portion of the plant to close in the early 90s. Uh, in 1993, US Steel was encouraged by the EPA to begin cleanup of the site because of soil contamination. US Steel is currently under a consent order with EPA, uh, making it responsible for cleanup for the entire US Steel site. US Steel has remediated the subject site, the 32 acres that we're speaking of this evening, consistent with that EPA consent order. The property is zoned MPM Materials Processing and Manufacturing District, which permits heavy industrial use, uh, such as that being proposed this evening. Elcon is proposing, as you know, a wastewater treatment facility for hazardous liquids at the site. And I wanna tell you a little bit about what types of hazardous wastes will be treated at the site and the process, so that you can understand what will be happening at the site. So first, let's talk about the types of waste that will be treated. These are liquid waste streams from industrial operations such as pharmaceutical, petroleum, semiconductor, or petrochemical operations. Most of the waste stream is made up of water. Eighty-one to eighty-nine percent, and sometimes up to ninety-five percent, of the waste that's received at the site will be water. Smaller portions will be suspended solids, organic materials, and salt, but again, most of this waste is comprised of water. Elcon has agreed...
Be very clear, please. Be very clear. We are doing a hearing, we're doing a, a meeting, this is a government meeting, it's a public meeting, obviously we wanna allow for public comment, but we will allow for public comment later. But we need to conduct this meeting in a respectable manner, and that will be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Elcon has voluntarily agreed that certain wastes will not be accepted at the facility, and I'm listing on the screen here for you the wastes that they will not be accepting. There will be no radioactive waste, there will be no medical waste, no oil and gas fracking waste, no PCBs or cyanide-containing waste, no reactive waste, no dioxin and furin-containing waste, and no solid waste. So, I wanted to give you a little background as to what happens before the waste arrives at the site. A customer of Elcon's will provide Elcon with comprehensive information about the waste stream that they're proposing to be processed on the site. Elcon then needs to verify, uh, that it's permitted to accept the waste stream under its DEP permit and develop a waste treatment plan. Then Elcon will complete detailed documentation for submission to DEP. DEP is then charged with approving the storage and treatment of the waste stream by Elcon at this site. Upon DEP's approval, then Elcon will notify its customer that the waste is accepted for treatment at the site. This process is going to occur for each type of waste stream and each customer. So, it's not that once this, this plan is approved and this facility is constructed, waste just starts arriving willy-nilly. Again, each customer has to provide Elcon with detailed information, Elcon has to review that information, submit it to DEP, and get DEP's approval to treat it at the site. The waste is going to be arriving at the site in tanker trucks or trucks with containers, and the waste will check in at the guardhouse. I'm going to show you the development plan in a few minutes, and, and I'll show you the location of the guardhouse. When the waste arrives in the trucks at the, at the guardhouse, Elcon will check the shipping documents to confirm that the waste that's arriving is the waste stream that it's expecting to arrive from this customer. The truck then moves to the waste station to be weighed, and a sample of the materials is collected, again, for Elcon to verify that the waste matches the profile for the customer and the waste that Elcon is expecting and is approved to treat onsite. Once that occurs, the truck moves to a stacking area while sample materials are analyzed in the onsite laboratory. And then, once the quantity and the quality of the waste stream are verified, the truck moves to the unloading area, which again, I'll show you on the site plan. The trucks then unload to a tank designed to hold the type of waste being unloaded. All the unloading operations will occur within an area designed to hold the full contents of the truck plus a heavy rainfall in order to protect from any spills. All tanks are stored within containment areas designed to hold the contents of the largest tank and a heavy rainfall, again, for spill protection. This is a simple four-step process that Elcon uses to then treat the waste that arrives onsite and that Elcon is permitted by DEP to treat onsite. Again, as I said, the waste stream is screened, stored in permitted tanks, and then it's pretreated. Solids and salts are removed from the waste stream and dried, and then treated to remove the VOCs, volatile organic compounds. The VOCs are removed from the waste stream as gases and sent to the pollution control system for treatment. Energy created by the process is then captured and recycled onsite. The end products of this process are distilled water, which again is reused onsite, salts and sludge. Any remaining solids are then sent to a licensed landfill for disposal. As I indicated, the two byproducts generated are salts and sludge, they're stored in totes or super sacks in the warehouse building onsite until they're transported to a licensed hazardous wastelandfill. We are anticipating approximately one truckload, uh, no more than one truckload for sure, and sometimes no truckloads of salt and sludge to be removed from the site per day, so maximum of one per day leaving the site. Uh, approximately 20 truckloads will be arriving onsite with, with the waste streams to be treated at the site a day. So approximately 20, sometimes a few more, sometimes a few less. Elcon has also committed voluntarily to perform various enhancement, enhancements at the site that go well beyond state and federal regulations. And while there are a number of these enhancements, I wanna say approximately 11 or 12, there are some that are specific to the land development approval process that I think that the board should be aware of, uh, as part of its review of this application. First, spill modeling. Elcon has performed sophisticated spill modeling, uh, at the site to determine whether an accidental, accidental spill could impact any drinking water supplies, uh, and any impacts on the Delaware River. Spill modeling that Elcon completed and submitted to DEP concluded there would be no impact on public water supplies from any of these hypothetical spill scenarios. To Elcon's knowledge, no other facilities at the KIPC, including various chemical companies that have existing permits from DEP authorizing storage of hazardous substances in the KIPC, have performed any modeling of this type to provide the kind of added assurances that Elcon is providing. Second, Elcon has taken significant protective measures to eliminate flood hazards. Pennsylvania regulations prohibit hazardous waste treatment facilities from being sited within the 100-year flood plain. The elevation of all hazardous waste treatment and storage areas within the site will be five feet above the 100-year flood, flood plain, and will also be above the 500-year flood plain. The facility is also designed, and I'll show you on the land development plan, to contain a barrier wall to further enhance any spill protection and protect against future floods. We believe the Elcon facility will be the most flood-protected facility within the KIPC. Elcon has also taken voluntary restrictions on the transportation routes that will be utilized to access the site. Elcon has agreed not to use Pennsylvania Avenue in Marsville as a truck route. All of these enhancements that I'm telling you about are all enhancements that Elcon has agreed to provide to DEP and fully expects to be part of any, uh, a condition to any permit approval that Elcon would receive from DEP. So again, they won't be using Pennsylvania Avenue as a truck route, they will be contracting with a private hauling company to collect and transport the liquid waste streams coming to the facility, so they will have full control over the trucks that will be, uh, delivering to the site and the routes that these trucks will be using. In addition, Elcon has agreed to a prohibition on barge deliveries and deliveries by rail. Fourth, Elcon will not have any industrial wastewater discharge into any water body, including the Delaware River. Rainwater falling within the containment areas will not enter the stormwater basin, it will be captured into the industrial wastewater treatment process. Rainwater that falls elsewhere on the site will be collected and conveyed to the stormwater basin, which discharges to the onsite wetlands that flow to Byles Creek and then the Delaware River. The stormwater basin also will contain an emergency shut-off valve leading into and exiting the basin, and is lined with an impermeable liner to prevent infiltration into the groundwater table. The liner and shut-off valve would contain any release of contaminants within the basin so that the water could be treated within the treatment facility. Fifth, Elcon has agreed to the installation of groundwater monitoring wells despite the fact that, uh, those would not be required by law for a facility of this type. In order to address concerns expressed by the public at the various DEP public meetings regarding potential impacts from the operations on public drinking water supplies, Elcon agreed to install a groundwater monitoring well network at the facility to act as an early warning sign of any accidental releases not contained by the numerous controls, secondary containment, and barrier wall already proposed at the facility. Finally, uh, Elcon has agreed to provide funding for a full-time inspector working directly for the township to be stationed at the facility as an impartial observer to ensure that Elcon is complying with its permits and all applicable regulations and the other commitments Elcon has made that go beyond regulatory compliance. This would all be at Elcon's expense, and Elcon has, is willing to provide this funding for a full-time inspector. This is a copy of the record plan that has been submitted to the township. The original application and plan were submitted January 25th. Following that date, we did receive some review letters, and the plans were revised and resubmitted on April 22nd, uh, just last week. This is the most recent plan that was submitted. Uh, down at the bottom is Dean Seaver's Place, and if I can just, maybe just zoom in here on the development portion of the site. Entering the site, there's a parking lot here, an office area to the left, right in front of the office is the guardhouse. Trucks would be entering here, stopping at the guardhouse, as I indicated, to confirm the waste stream that's being proposed at the site. This is the truck stacking area, and then the truck unloading area, and trucks would access through the site this way. Laboratory and warehouse, uh, buildings are, are located over here, and the treatment facility. The stormwater basin I mentioned is right here. So, we have received review letters at this point from the township fire marshal, the township engineer, uh, and Remington and Burnick, the township traffic consultant, uh, as recently as today. Uh, we are not asking for any zoning relief in connection with this proposed development. We are not seeking any waivers from any of the township's ordinances in connection with this development. Elcon believes it can comply with each of the comments contained in the outstanding review letters. Elcon has repeatedly asked for additional time to resubmit plans and to work with the township's consultants through those letters. Nonetheless, it's our understanding that the township intends to take action this evening, and Elcon is fully prepared to comply with those letters. And so the only action that Elcon would seek tonight would be, uh, an action for approval of this plan. Happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Okay, thank you. Um, at this time, due to our, uh, this is an unusual, uh, technical, we're good? Okay, we're checking with our technicians, obviously not our usual setup, uh, and so we may be breaking periodically just for brief times to allow our, our, the AV, our own AV personnel, as well as those from Pensbury, to make sure things are getting, uh, recorded properly. So, we're okay? Okay, all right. All right, at this time, we'll move on to, uh, board and township, uh, questions.
Can I go first?
Sure. Yeah. Mr. Brasky.
Uh, my first question, is the purchase of the property contingent upon the DEP approval?
Yes, yes, yes it is.
Is the purchase of the property contingent upon the approval of Falls Township Board of Supervisors?
I believe the, um, environmental permits are the only condition in the, um, agreement of sale that addresses the purchase of the property.
Okay.
Sorry.
Uh, my next question is, in relation to, is talking about the, uh, in, full-time inspector. Would the full-time inspector, are you, are you guys referring to the inspector would be working for the Falls Township directly? We would be hiring the inspector?
Yes, the intent is Elcon would provide funding for that inspector, but they would report to the township, you would provide direction to that inspector.
So, I'm, I'm not a labor attorney or labor counsel, but maybe our attorney can comment if, 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 um, Elcon was to go out of business, we would be stuck with that employee and the cost of keeping that employee, we couldn't just do away with that position. Um, Mike, am I correct?
If the employee were one of, and a member of one of the, uh, unions in the township, um, and unless there was an agreement ahead of time with the union, that if the position were no longer needed, it could be eliminated and that person could be terminated, uh, you are correct. We would be, I don't wanna say the word stuck, but, uh, that person would continue to be an employee with the township.
Okay. Um, my next question are the, the, um, regards to the plans, the, the plans aren't very clear in regards to the existing water main along Dean Seaver's Place. Um, I assume the only connection is at, uh, Steel Road?
Uh, it's the intention to extend public water to the site, up through Dean Seaver's Place into the site.
So there'll be multiple connections?
I, I'm sure that it would be advantageous to loop the system, uh, as it comes into the site and back out. Those are details that we're still working through with your township consultants. I would add that US Steel, who provides the water, has given us assurance that they have the capacity to serve the needs for the domestic...
I wasn't concerned about a capacity, I'm concerned about if you have, if there was a break in that line, you, you would have no water supply for the emergency services.
We have been dealing with the fire marshal with respect to all of his comments, and we're, as I've indicated on multiple occasions, we continue to work with your consultants to work through any concerns that we, they have. I have asked for a continuance, there's no need for the board to take action this evening. Elcon has granted a waiver of the time periods under the municipality's planning code and the township's ordinances. These plans were just submitted last week, we just received review letters within six days. There is no pressure from our standpoint for a decision to be made, we're certainly willing to continue to work with your consultants to respond to any comments.
Then why didn't you submit plans at all?
We have that right by law to submit plans, we would like to be treated like any other applicant in this municipality. Plans are typically reviewed and extensions are typically granted, in fact, we utilize the township's form waiver, which indicates that that waiver of time is revocable by the applicant upon 90 days' written notice. This is no different than any other application.
All right. If I, if I could add on to the, uh, fire question, I'm certainly not the fire protection engineer, but there is a proposed, uh, fire water tank onsite that would be worked out with the fire marshal in terms of sizing and pressure and whatnot.
So, in regards to the onsite water tank, um, I don't see a backup generator system, so my concern would be...
There will be a backup generator, fire pumps, as well as backup for, uh, providing power to the facility for lighting and emergency lighting.
Is it on the plan?
Those, those are building permit issues, those are not land development issues, those are not requirements of your land development ordinance or your zoning ordinance, those are certainly all comp issues that we will work out at the building permit, uh, stage with your fire marshal and other appropriate staff. So, no, those are not on the plan, 'cause this is a land development plan.
Okay, I guess my last question, so if, um, in terms of the parking lot for the office workers, how will they get out of the driveway if the driveways are blocked? If there's a, if there is a hazmat problem or a fire, or, I seen the, uh, fire department connection is right, right in front of the, uh, employee walkway to get to the parking lot.
Uh, how would they get out in a car, or how would they walk out of the parking lot and get out to Dean Seaver's Place?
I guess, I guess really my question is both.
I mean, just like any other facility, whether it's industrial or commercial, when there's a fire and there's emergency service vehicles blocking the entrance and you need to get people away from the site, they would walk away from the site and have to leave their cars there for a period of time.
So, so if there is an emergency onsite, um, and the employees or our, our residents or our volunteer firefighters, if there was an emergency, how would they, how would they get off the site if they're in the back corner of the property where the retaining wall is seven foot high, and I would assume that'll have a fence on top of it as well?
That is one of the issues that IES is currently working out with your fire marshal, and we do not have an answer to that.
That's, that's land development, though, correct, or am I incorrect?
No, that's correct, and I can appreciate that you're picking items that are contained in the review letters that we just received yesterday and today.
No, this is off the drawings, I'm just going off of, it's land development, I'm just asking questions on the drawings that they were provided to me.
These are comments that we received just yesterday and today, and again, certainly willing to work with the township. We believe that we can provide safe, uh, access in and out of the site, we can meet all of the fire code requirements. Uh, we're willing to work with the township's consultants to address all of these comments, and we believe that by law, we have the right to do that. I do know what the law is.
All right, so my last, so I don't have any more questions, but my, just, just my comment is that, um, after reviewing the plans, I don't think that this site fits, based on that you guys wanna raise it... To bring it into the 500-year plan, you have to put the retaining wall in, you have to bring fill in, you have to raise that site and sit above everybody else, and that's, and that's a concern of mine.
And again, that is, exceeds the local township ordinance, that...
I'm just making a comment.
Okay, thank you, so was I.
And before we get, um, before we get to another board member, just to clarify, um, the very first review letter, I believe, was issued to you on March 14th? Okay, 3/14?
Sounds about right.
That's, that's correct. The first Jones engineering letter is dated March 14th.
So, the review letter was 3/14, not yesterday, and you did get another review letter yesterday, but you did get a review letter on 3/14.
Yes, and with all due respect, typically, plans of this nature for a site like this and a development like this would not be pushed through the process this quickly. Plans would go through numerous reviews, and the parties would work together to address the comments.
Mr. Galloway?
We don't have one, sir.
Do you wanna go next?
Yeah.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Galloway?
I've heard all that I wanna hear, no questions.
I have questions. No questions?
I have questions.
Oh, you do? Mr. Dent?
Yeah. You talked about the, um, containment area where the trucks offload, uh, and it's showing as concrete on the plan, is that confined, that has walls on the sides, is that correct? To contain whatever would spill or rain, you said? Is that right?
There's different containment areas, where the tanks are, they are in walled containment areas, and they are concrete lined with a coating that is impervious to the materials that are in the tanks. The unloading area where the trucks are, uh, they will back down a slope, and, uh, that is also concrete and lined with, um, impervious material as well, and there are walls at the bottom, and it's sloped downward to the bottom where the trucks will unload, so...
And that's, that can, that's considered for the containment area where the unloading is, we're talking about?
Correct, 'cause the unloading occurred.
And it's big enough to control a rainstorm?
Oh, yeah, yeah, they're designed to hold a large rainstorm event.
Yeah, so there's no chance of that going into the basin if it overflows?
No, it will actually go to the plant for treatment, it will be drained to the wastewater treatment plant. If, if there is a spill or a leak in the truck, it'll drain to a drain that goes directly to the wastewater treatment plant for processing.
And you've considered rain as a...
And, including the rain, the rainwater will also be treated.
All right. Um, the storm sewer pipes with the black backflow preventers, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And what is the reason for that?
As an additional, uh, safety measure, in the event that a spill of one of the trucks occurred outside the containment areas, we would have the ability to shut off the storm sewer getting into the basin to contain it in the pipes. In the event it got into the basin, there is a, another shut-off valve at the outlet structure to contain it in the basin. As stated earlier, there's an impermeable liner which would then, uh, you know, isolate that, uh, spill in the basin so that it could be properly removed and put into the treatment facility without, uh, any, uh, flow out of the site, like we talked about.
All right. But the pipes are below the 100-year flood elevation, is that correct?
The pipes are, the basin was designed with the proper backflow preventer so that if the 100-year flood occurred, the berm of the basin would still be above that so that the 100-year flood wouldn't get into the basin, as well as the water in the basin wouldn't be able to get out because of the back, the backflow preventer and the pipe.
Right. But what if they get clogged? That's gonna be a problem? Then the basin doesn't work properly?
Well, uh, two things, one, there's a stormwater maintenance agreement that the township will require... employee could certainly every single day inspect that pipe to make sure it's not clogged.
All right, but they're still not above the 100-foot floodplain, which you said everything was going to be. Is that right?
The pipes themselves are not above the 100-year floodplain. Correct.
And they're going to end up back in Biles Creek? Is that where they head?
As we stated earlier, stormwater runoff from the site will enter the wet-
That's what we're talking about, in the basin?
The basin discharges to the onsite wetlands, which is hydroatically connected to Biles Creek in the Delaware River. Yes.
Correct. And they're above the 100-foot floodplain again? Or below, I mean?
The basin itself is not within the 100-year floodplain on the site. The floodplain is not, the basin is not in the floodplain.
I'm talking about the pipes.
No, actually, I mean, the, I don't have it exactly in front of me, but the pipes, in order to drain, the basin discharges above the 100-year floodplain elevation.
All right. What about the truck stacking area? Not the discharge area, but the stacking area. Is that contained as well?
No.
Is that an area of containment?
No, at that point, the trucks are just sitting there. They are equipped with all of the required equipment by the Department of Transportation that would prevent a spill from a truck just sitting there. In the unlikely event of a spill, it would go to the impermeable, impermeable line basin, and that would be shut off, so that's how-
But it would end up in the basin that we're talking about?
Again, it's impermeable and with valves, two valves that will allow it to be shut off.
And you don't think there's any chance of any of those trucks ever having malfunction or leaking?
It would be highly, highly unlikely. Their design-
But if they did, it's going to end up in the basin again?
It would end up in the basin, which is impermeable and equipped with valves to turn it off.
Ladies and gentlemen?
All right, my next question was about the fire lane, but you said that you're going to address his comments, the fire marshal's comments, so I'll leave that for him. Because it only appears to be right in front of the warehouse area. Is that correct?
We can provide fire lanes wherever the fire marshal would like a fire lane.
All right, that's all I have right now. I might have another question. I do have a quick question. Do you have any idea the number of trucks daily that you expect? Not the capacity, but a normal day?
Yes, and earlier I indicated we're expecting approximately 20 trucks per day coming on to the site. No more than one per day leaving the site with the salts and the sludge.
Mr. Rocco?
Yeah, I have one. In a catastrophic failure, the basin is intended to collect that waste, is that correct?
First line of defense in a catastrophic failure would be the secondary containment that all the treatment, storage, and unloading activities occur with that. If there's a catastrophic failure of that containment area, then the basin would serve as a backup to the initial containment area.
Okay, and the shut-off valves, is that a manual process to close them?
Right.
So you're relying on someone to, to know that they need to go there and shut them off?
And they would be trained to know that, correct, Mark?
Right. Correct. Elcon can look at automating it. There's options for all of these things.
I think all the other questions have been answered. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we're allowing, we're taking just a very, very brief moment. Our stenographer needs to relocate. She's always in trouble because people yelling and everything, so she's having a hard time hearing what's being said because there's so much chatter going on. If you want me, it's not a hard thing. No. Don't worry, he's like you. Okay, a lot of my questions were asked already, and I also have, I'm curious to hear what our professionals are saying, are going to say as well, so I'm going to, at this time, I may have follow-up questions in a minute, but allow Mr. Clark to, and our staff, to answer or ask questions of Elcon, or each other. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. I do not have any questions for Elcon, but I do have some questions for the township engineer and the township fire marshal, if that is okay with the board.
Yes.
First, I'd like to ask some questions for the township engineer, Mr. Joe Jones. Mr. Jones, are you the township consultant?
Yes, I am.
And how long have you been in that position?
I've been the engineer of record since January, but the assistant to the engineer since 2007.
And you are a licensed professional engineer?
Yes, sir.
And in your position as a township engineer, do you review plans that are submitted in the land development process?
I do.
And did you have the opportunity to review the plans submitted by the applicant in January of this year?
I have.
And following that review, did you issue a review letter outlining areas of concerns or areas that did not comply with the township subdivision and land development ordinance?
I did.
And subsequent to submitting that letter to the applicant, did the applicant submit revised plans?
They did.
And did you have an opportunity to review those plans?
We did.
And did you have an opportunity to produce a second review letter?
Yes, sir, we did.
And to the best of your knowledge, both the original letter and your second review letter have been submitted to the applicant?
That's correct.
Can you tell us what changes were made from the first set of plans to the revised plans?
Yes, in general, there were changes made to address some of our review comments. They weren't very substantive in terms of the changes. They added, for example, an access lane to the basin. They adjusted the parking lot to remove fill from the swell, and did some planned things and bookkeeping things to try to clean up the letter.
So there are a few comments on your review letters that I want to take a few moments and discuss with you. The first is the applicant is proposing to construct a retaining wall. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Not specific to this project, but can you tell us generally what a retaining wall is?
Sure. Simply stated, it's a structure that holds a retained soil behind it.
And specifically related to this project, how is this retaining wall designed?
It's designed as a cantilever-type reinforced poured concrete wall.
And based on your review of the applicant's plan, do you have an understanding of the reasoning behind the design of the retaining wall?
Yes, we think we do.
Okay, and can you tell us what that is?
Well, the retaining wall appears to be constructed and proposed at its location to support a significant amount of fill, to bring the site elevations to, I assume, a predetermined elevation above the floodplain.
So is it correct in saying that the retaining wall is necessary to provide a structure to hold back the amount of fill that is going to be added for this proposed facility?
Yes.
So let's talk for a second about the fill. Can you tell us what is meant when we use the word "fill"?
Fill is, generally is a material, usually soil, that is brought to a site and compacted in place to change the elevations, to raise the elevations of the improvements above existing elevations on-site.
And what does our township code state regarding the use of fill in this type of project?
Our SALDO subdivision and land development ordinance, section 191-29E, states that land developments shall be properly designed in order to prevent the necessity for excessive amounts of cut or fill.
What is the volume of fill that's being proposed by the applicant?
70,000 cubic yards of material. It's based on our preliminary calculations, and that may be a bit of an underestimate.
Okay. So I don't know what 70,000 cub, 70,000 tons of cubic yards means. Can you put that in layman's terms? How many, how many dump trucks of fill will, will be put on this site?
Being in favor of the applicant at 14 yards per dump truck, it's about 5,000 trucks.
And to the best of your knowledge, do you have an understanding of what would be the anticipated timeframe for bringing in that amount of fill?
It's a very complicated question. There are many factors that are associated with that, weather conditions. Sometimes the material has to be handled on-site to bring it to its maximum density. There's the construction of the retaining wall that weighs in that would slow down the filling operation, but we're talking about a long period of time, in months, not weeks.
Do you have any experience in reviewing any similar plans involving this amount of additional fill?
No.
Okay. To the best of, but you do have experience in reviewing projects where fill is, is used?
That's correct.
Okay. Is this far and away the most amount of fill that you've ever reviewed as an engineer?
It's exorbitant, and I can add to it by saying that when you enter a project as a design engineer, your goal is always to balance the site and have no need for importation of fill or exportation of cut.
Now-
Mr. Clark, may I ask a follow-up question?
You can, Ms. Fremuth, when I'm, when I'm done asking my questions with Mr. John. And I'll be done quickly. Now, we've talked, much of the discussion regarding this project has been that the project is being proposed near the river. Can you describe the proximity of the retaining wall to the nearby river?
As the crow flies, the project site is about 2,000 feet to Biles Creek and about 7,000 feet to the river channel.
Okay. And do you have an opinion that if this retaining wall were to fail, what would be the potential result of that as it relates to the river?
If the retaining wall were to fail, and there's many cases and failure modes available for a wall to fail, and, you know, it's also an acceptable construction method to retain soil, but if it were to fail, then you would experience consolidation of the existing soil in this case, in which you could experience differential settlement, which would cause cracks to pavement systems, concrete slabs, et cetera. And if those slabs were to crack, in this case, especially the containment area, then you may have leaching into the groundwater.
And can you describe, can?
Don't, don't talk, don't look at me. Look into the mic.
Can you describe the location of the floodplain in relation to the proposed development?
The floodplain is, it's an interesting question. The horizontal distance from our site to the floodplain is about 2,000 feet. By the way, FEMA maps the 100-year special flood hazard area. This site is in what's called the shaded zone X, which is the 500-year floodplain, which, the definition of which says that it's subject to low-level flooding or protected from the 100-year flood by levees. So horizontally, it's about 2,000 feet from the 100-year floodplain, but vertically, the elevations on-site are ranging from three feet below to two and a half feet above the floodplain. So it's a difficult question to talk about in terms of distance.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Harvey, I, I don't have any further questions for Mr. Jones. I do believe that Ms. Fremuth has asked for the opportunity to, to follow up with some questions for, for Mr. Jones, and I believe that would be entirely appropriate at this point in time.
Okay, Ms. Fremuth?
Thank you. Mr. Jones, I'm looking at your review letter where you've indicated it appears that the design of the improvements will require the import of material in excess of 70,000 cubic yards.
Yes.
I believe you've stated that in your letter, correct?
Correct.
Your letter does not state that that is excessive, does it?
Not specifically, no.
No. And your letter does not direct the applicant to reduce the amount of fill, does it?
It does not. It simply states the case.
And with respect to the floodplain management ordinance in your letter, there are three comments, one of which is to obtain a permit from the floodplain administrator and submit a permit application and identify the base flooded elevation for the site. Those are the three comments. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Those are all the questions.
I have a follow-up question. Mr. Garten, how many projects have you done that bring in 70,000 cubic yards of fill?
I don't believe any of the projects I've done have brought in 70,000 cubic yards of fill.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Clark?
Thank you. I'd like to ask a few questions for the township fire marshal, Mr. Dipolito. And so, since I've already identified you as the fire marshal, I won't ask what your position is. How long have you been the fire marshal in Falls Township?
It'll be 11 years in August.
And what are your responsibilities as the township fire marshal?
I investigate all fires, I, for origin and cause. I review all plans, all fire suppression, all fire alarm. I supervise a staff that does inspections.
And I should have asked you this before I asked you that question, but in addition to being the fire marshal, you're have, you're also a firefighter in the township, correct?
That's correct.
And for a long time, you were chief of one of the township fire-
Almost 20 years.
Okay. And how long have you been a firefighter in the township?
I've been a volunteer in, in Farrell Hills for 41, 42 years.
It's going to be insufferable, so I'd ask that you, you stop applauding him, because we won't be able to deal with him tomorrow. Mr. Dipolito, as fire marshal, do you review land development plans?
I do.
Okay. Now, Mr. Jones talked about what the type of review that he does as the township engineer. The fire marshal's review is different from the township engineer review, correct?
Yes, I'm looking for life safety issues.
Okay. What other, what other, what other issues are you looking for with regards to the plans, or is it all just life safety issues?
I mean, that's the terminology I'll use, but I look for water supply, egress, ingress, fire lanes, basic things like that is part of the land development.
And have you reviewed the applicant's plans that were submitted in January of this year?
I have.
Okay. Can you tell us specifically what plans you were able to review?
The date?
No. Were you, were there specific plans that you reviewed as part of your review?
Yes.
Is there an emergency or contingency plan from the applicant?
They were the land development plans that were submitted. There were multiple copies.
Have you received an emergency or contingency plan from the applicant?
Not an emergency action plan, no.
Okay. Did you issue a review letter?
Yes, I did.
And in your review letter, did you identify any areas of concern or issues with the plan?
Yes, I did.
Okay. What were they?
The initial review letter, I had stated I was looking for the hydrants, fire lanes, size of the fire pump and fire water, circulation around the property, road widths, and locations of fire department connection, I think, were the items that I had listed.
Do you have your review letter in, in front of you, Mr. Dipolito?
The first one or the second one?
The, the first one.
Yes, somewhere in here.
Do you have it, Rich?
Yes.
Okay. Can you go to comment eight?
Yes, I got it.
Can you tell us what your concern was in comment eight?
Comment eight referred to the wall that you just spoke to, Mr. Jones, about the retaining wall. My concern was, from what I remember on the plans, it was about a seven-foot elevation in the back of the plant with a fence on top, and my concern was, in some type of catastrophic event, how would the employees and our fire, our emergency rescue, our fire departments, how would they escape the property? How, you know, off a seven-foot wall with a fence on top?
And you noted that in your- And you noted that in your review letter?
Yes, I did.
Did there come a time when you were asked to review the revised plans?
Yes.
And did you issue a second review letter after reviewing the revised plans?
Yes, I did.
And did you identify any areas of concerns in the revised plans?
Some of them were addressed that I am still looking at. They're still under review. The one specific to the retaining wall has still not been satisfactorily addressed.
Mr. Dipolito, if there were an event at the project that required emergency services, would you be notified regarding that event?
Standard procedure, yes.
And approximately how long after this event occurs would you anticipate that you would be notified?
Well, so you understand the process, I mean, an incident happens, someone has to notify 911. 911 takes all the information, they notify the respective fire departments. If they, at that time, know that it's something severe, they'll notify me. And so, from the initial call, I mean, it could be a few minutes, I guess.
And once you're notified, do you notify any other agencies?
Depending on the situation, yes.
Okay. So, let's, let's say there is a significant or serious event at the site. You would anticipate that you would be notified and then that you would notify other agencies, correct?
Myself or the radio room, yes.
Okay. What emergency services would be available if there were a significant event at this site?
Well, first level or first line of defense is gonna be your fire departments. If it's a hazardous material incident, that's a whole separate way of operating. Initially, the county hazmat team gets notified, and also due to our proximity to the city of Trenton, we automatically notify the city of Trenton and have them respond over with their hazmat team.
And you said initially it would be fire and EMS, then it would be the county hazmat, and then it would be hazmat for the city of Trenton. To the best of your knowledge, and you're, you're obviously familiar with this site, you've been down on this site thousands of times, how long does it take for each of those entities to respond to something down at the US Steel site?
Normal response time out of any of the volunteer fire companies is within four minutes. You're, even if you're running from the station to the scene, lights on siren, you're probably looking at a, an eight-minute, a nine-minute response, in addition to the four minutes or so up front.
Are you aware of any specific equipment that will be needed to respond to an emergency at the applicant's development based on what they're going to be doing at this site?
Not yet.
Okay. So you're, you're, have not been made aware of any additional equipment that may be needed by the first responder, by the fire departments?
No.
Okay. If there were an emergency event, again, a significant event at this property, do you have any concerns regarding the ability to respond to other emergencies within the township?
It's just, you know, if you're tied up at one place, you can't be at two places at one time, so if we're down the mill, or, you know, the USX property, whatever you wanna call it, it's the furthest point probably in our township, so it can take you some time if you have another incident somewhere else in the township.
I, I wanna go back just to one, very quickly to the response times. When you said nine or 10 minutes, that's fire and EMS, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. County hazmat would be about how long?
County hazmat, by the time they gather their members, they could be coming from all over the county, so realistically, you could be getting somebody from Quakertown or, you know, Springfield. They're all, they're, they're spread throughout the county, so, I mean, realistically, probably within an hour.
And that response time several years ago is why we started working with the Trenton hazmat, correct?
That's right. 20 to on duty 24/7.
And they're gonna be a little bit faster than the county, correct?
Yes.
But do you have an idea of what their response time would be?
Well, they, they're on duty, so, I mean, that saves you some time, but they still will gather their hazmat equipment, probably within 15 minutes or so, they should be coming across the bridge.
Thank you, Mr. Dipolito. Chairman Harvey, I don't have any further questions for, for Mr. Dipolito or for anyone else.
Okay.
I do have a few follow-up questions for Mr. Dipolito.
Okay.
Mr. Dipolito, are there other sites within the township where there could be such a hazardous event that you and Mr. Clark were just referring to, other than this site?
A hazardous material incident?
Yes.
Yes.
And are there other sites within the KIPC where there could be a hazardous material incident?
Yes.
And you mentioned that you did not receive an emergency action plan in connection with this land development review, is that correct?
Correct.
Would it be typical for you to receive an emergency action plan with an initial land development submission?
Would it be-
Typical?
That I would not receive it?
Yes.
Probably, yes.
And does your letter request such an emergency action plan?
No, it did not.
And with respect to the comment number eight in your review letter regarding emergency egress stairs along the retaining wall, you identified IFC 1028.5, which states exit discharge shall provide a direct and unobstructed access to a public way. That, that was the code section that was the basis for your comment, is that correct?
I don't have it here in front of me, but I'll take your word for it.
Okay, thank you. Yes, and that section requires clear and unobstructed access from a building to a public way be provided. And are you, have you seen the applicant's response to your first review letter?
Yes, I did. And I think he mentioned that we had discussed it.
Yes, and he, he indicated upon further discussion with the fire marshal, additional modifications may be made to the land development plans. In the meantime, dispersal areas have been, as well as facility egress paths have been provided at the site as set forth on the drawings included on sheet 1 of 15 of the plan set, and a second site access drive has been provided. So, the environmental consultant, the applicant believed they met that requirement, but indicated if you had additional concerns, they'd be willing to address those with you. Is that your understanding?
My understanding, when I spoke to him on the phone, was, they said they, I was told, they didn't know how they were gonna be able to put stairways and such to a walkable surface. And I said, well, whoops, you'll have to, you know, it was, they were still gonna work on it, is how I took it.
But, but there's no code requirement to provide stairways on a retaining wall, is there?
I think some, it has to do with the AHJ, I mean-
With what, I'm sorry?
With the, you know, me being the authority, having jurisdiction, I'm looking at a safety, a safe pathway, so whether I can find something specific in the code that, that says, that specifically states retaining wall, and I don't know that it's gonna be specific enough.
Right. The, the requirement, again, is clear and unobstructed access from a building to a public way, which the applicant believes they have provided, but certainly would be willing to work with you if you felt something additional was necessary. Those are all the questions for Mr. Dipolito.
Okay.
I have a comment, a follow-up comment with that, may I? I'm sorry. If you're in the back of the site, you have a seven-foot retaining wall, and you have first responders with all their gear on-
And a fence.
And a fence, yeah, like Mr. Baraski said. What are you gonna do with those people? I mean, they have to be able to get safely somewhere. I mean, acting like that set, a set of stairs is unrealistic. I mean, I think that's a legitimate concern on Mr. Dipolito's part.
And, and I believe that the applicant was- Again, the applicant received the comment, the applicant revised the plan as the applicant felt appropriate to address the requirements of that section of the code, and indicated to the fire marshal that they'd be willing to make additional revisions to make the fire marshal comfortable.
That's right, but you just said that it wasn't required.
He has reiterated, he continues to have a concern. We just got his letter yesterday.
All right, it's a legitimate concern.
We haven't had a chance to revise the plans. We've asked for that time, we continue to ask for that time, and certainly, we are willing to do that.
That's all, yeah.
All right, just to point out, Ms. Fremuth, the comment that you're referencing is in the March 15th letter and in the letter you just received yesterday.
Correct. I said, and as I said, Commissioner, Mr. Chairperson, we, we addressed the comment, we believe we've addressed the comment with respect to the code requirement. The fire marshal has asked for, we believe, something additional. We have no problem that he has a concern, we're willing to sit down with him and address those concerns, but we believe we've met the code requirements. Which, again, is to provide unobstructed access, as I indicated earlier.
All right, Mr. Clark, are you finished with your questions?
I, I am.
Okay. I have a few follow-up questions. Mr., from Mr. Dipolito, I know we had a brief discussion, can you state any concerns you have regarding fire truck access, turning radius, things of that nature?
In the latest review that, that they just received, I still have some concerns with turning, the circulation throughout the complex, as well as fire lanes. That was part of my review from the, the second review.
Okay. All right. And I'm thinking specifically of the area between where the storage tanks are and the warehouse. It's, it seems like a pretty tight right-hand turn for vehicles that are coming from the truck stacking area around, trying to get in between where that fire lane actually is. Is that an area you have concerns with as well?
Yes, there's, there's a couple few spots that look like they're tight or may not work.
Okay. For Mr. Jones, a similar question regarding truck turning radius, not specifically fire trucks, but for trucks that are coming to the site carrying the hazardous material after they offload, trying to make that right-hand turn and goes between those, the storage tanks and the warehouse. It seems to me a pretty tight turn. Do you have concerns about that?
Mr. Chairman, that's correct. It is a very tight layout in general.
Okay.
And there are numerous areas where we think that there are extremely tight turning movements and very limited radii for those movements, in particular along the tank farm where you just mentioned, there's actually no protection between the driveway and the building or tank walls, so there are a number of, of areas where we think it's, it's a pretty tight layout, including Alan Dean Seaver's place.
Okay. We do have, in addition, Mr. Fazio, our traffic engineer, who did review this plan, I was wondering, Mr. Fazio, do you have any concerns on your end?
I, I have several. Basically, there, there's, there's a route that, that's shown on the plans as far as how the trucks are going to traverse. The question that we have is how are the truck drivers going to know the, the route? There's no signage, there's, there's no markings. I think it was gonna be challenging for a truck driver to know where to go or how to get to the site. Something else that's noted is, I know that Pennsylvania is, is restricted for access, but, again, how does enforcement occur? How, how do the drivers know where they're allowed to go and where they're not allowed to go? So I, those, those are significant questions that I have.
Yes, thank, thank you. We did receive your letter this morning with those questions, and I indicated earlier today that Elcon will be contracting with a private trucking company, and they will be required in their contract to utilize the specific route that we've identified.
Well, there, there's several other comments that are enumerated in the letter that all relate to the circulation. That, that's my biggest issue on the plan.
And one question for Mr. Garten. Mr. Garten, do you believe that you can revise the plans with respect to the truck turning comments that have been raised this evening?
Yes, I, yes, I do believe we can revise the plans to meet the truck turning comments of the township engineer and township traffic engineer.
And do you believe you can revise the plans to comply with all of the comments contained in the currently outstanding review letters from the fire marshal, the township engineer, and Remington and Vernon?
Yes, I've done quite a few jobs in Falls Township over the years, worked with the engineer and the fire marshal on those projects, and believe the comments in their letter are things that we can certainly address upon re-submissions.
And Marge, could you expand upon the question that was just asked with respect to the, the truck route that will be utilized?
Yes, the trucks will all be equipped with GPS, and there is a, that'll be tracked by the owner, and they're contracting with a single owner, so they have controls, contractual control over the route the drivers take. And there's a system embedded in that with ultimately fines to the trucking firm, as well as dismissal of the driver from allowing to, to deliver material to Elcon.
So Elcon's utilizing the GPS tracking device to confirm that the truck is utilizing the agreed-to route, correct?
Correct.
That the GPS is not being utilized like Waze to send them on the fastest route to the site? The GPS is utilized as a monitoring mechanism.
To track the, the route of the truck, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Fazio, for the record, your first letter, review letter, was March 6th, does that sound right?
That sounds correct.
All right, I hope so, because I'm looking at it. Question I have for Mr. Jones, you make reference in your review letter, and there's a response from Gilmore dated April 22nd to the original review letter, and that's what I'm looking at, regarding an analysis, downstream analysis. What's your concern about that?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. We are asking the applicant to take a look at the hydraulic connection, which they mentioned, between this site through the various culverts and channels directly to Biles Creek, because we believe, again, backing up to the FEMA floodplain mapping, I mean, because FEMA doesn't have, you know, the best available information that we may, doesn't mean that the site's not inundated or subject to that flooding, it just means that we can't regulate to the FEMA floodplain, but we want them to look downstream to see if there's a backward effect on this site that would bring the base flood onto the site, and then ask them to design all the infrastructure accordingly, including the basin and the storm sewer pipes and everything else that Mr. Dentz had asked.
All right, thank you. All right, are there other-
May I just ask Mr. Jones a question regarding that?
Sure.
In your original review letter, that was, I believe, comment number eight, and, and the applicant did provide a response in the April 22nd letter, did you receive that letter, Mr. Jones?
I did.
And then in your letter that we received yesterday, you have simply reiterated the same comment without responding to any of the information provided by the applicant, is that correct?
Yeah, we weren't comfortable with them saying they weren't gonna do it.
We, well, well, we can't- The applicant, the applicant would find it difficult to respond to the same comment twice if the comment doesn't indicate what information is being requested, the applicant responded to the comment, yet your second letter simply reiterated the same comment without acknowledging the information provided. Would you agree?
Yeah, but we, we weren't comfortable with the response.
But, but the comment doesn't say that, does it?
It's our practice, when we make a comment in our letters and we don't have any correspondence with the applicant's engineer, and they simply object, or like, for example, on the DEP permit comment, they simply said that they're not required when we were asking for confirmation that they're not required, so it's our practice that we reiterate it until the applicant actually addresses the comment.
Thank you for providing that clarification. Again, the applicant is certainly willing to have a conversation with you to confirm what it is you're looking for exactly and provide you with, with what it is that you need. Thank you.
Okay.
You keep saying you will comply with the fire marshal's issues, but when you look at how tight this plan is and the fire lane, without adding another lane, I mean, it's really, I don't see how you can do it. I mean, the, your emergency response trucks being able to move freely through the entire site without being blocked anywhere, I mean, I know you keep saying we will comply, but, you know-
Again, we're happy to re-submit plans showing you that we can comply, and, and we're not asking you for to make it, to make a decision this evening.
I don't think your site fits in this space, is what my problem is. I mean, to, to put a fire lane around it, you need another 30 to 40 feet between the driveway and the retaining wall, and that's not gonna happen, no matter what you do.
Thank you for your comments. Again, we'd like in- Thank you for your comments. Again, we'd like in good faith to have the opportunity to provide responsive comments and plans to the comments that are contained in the review letters. And we're happy to show you that we can make this work.
Are there any other...
No.
Or comments or questions at this time? Any professional...
Chairman, I can interrupt?
Sure.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to deny the application in front of us.
Second motion?
Second. All right, we do have, we did have, I think, some people who signed up for public comment. We're going to take a, we take a, need a short break just for our IT staff. Our staff needs a second. All right, so, our staff has got us sort of up and running. So, we do have, you know, sign-in sheets, which are signed here, residents and non-residents. We did allot time for public comment. So, we do have people on the list. They did sign in. We were planning on doing three minutes per speaker, just so that we could maximize the number of people who could speak. The sheets unfortunately do say five minutes, so we are going to try and hold to three minutes, just ask people if they want to speak to keep it brief. If you have questions of staff or ourselves, you know, those comments will be, those questions will be recorded, and we'll respond following. We don't want to just get into back and forth because that eats up people's time to speak and be heard. You know, you may, you're certainly allowed to ask Elcon questions. They do not have to answer. It's not a requirement. We're under no, they're under no obligation to answer, and we're not going to be forcing them to answer. So, just so you're aware of that. The first name we have on the resident sign-in sheet is Shivani Patel.
Hi, my name is Shivani Patel, and I'm a senior here at Pensbury High School. Instead of spending my time...
Excuse me, excuse me, can you hold on for one second? Please spell your name.
S-H-I-V-A-N-I. Patel, P-A-T-E-L. So, instead of spending my time planning out a graduation party or searching for prom dresses, I have been spending countless hours canvassing in order to stand up for the safety of my community's clean air, health, and environment. Instead of studying for my AP Gov. exam and preparing for my Crime and Punishment assignment for tomorrow, I am taking precious time out of my night to stand up against this bullshit that I am embracing.
This is Ms. Patel. We do not allow obscenities. You're going to have to sit down.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, I know what kind of language our political discourse has become, thanks to certain individuals in office. I'm not going to, I will not tolerate it here. Bonnie Edwards. Bonnie Edwards?
No, we're moving on. We heard you.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen.
We're never going to get there.
Ms. Edwards?
Well, this is very quick. I signed the wrong paper by accident.
The next name is Erica, is it Brady's? Is that right? Don't forget to spell your name for the stenographer, please.
It's Erica, E-R-I-C-A, Brady's, B-R-A-D-for-dog, E-I-S. My name is Erica, as you know. I'm part of the Clean Air and Water Council. I've been dedicating a lot of time and energy into opposing Elcon building this site in, um, Falls Township. I'm here to voice my concern with Elcon's proposal to build the hazardous waste facility, and I have lived in Falls Township, Pennsylvania, my whole life, 27 years to be exact. My mother lives in Pinewood Crossing section in Morrisville, Pennsylvania. According to Google Maps, the proposed Elcon site is 1.8 miles away from my mother's home. My mother helps with my two children on a daily basis. My job is to protect my children and my family, and I cannot agree with Elcon building this hazardous waste facility 1.8 miles away from my mother's home where my children go. The risk with traffic and trucks hauling hazardous waste to the site increases exposure of accidents that could impact my family and residents in a negative way. I worry that a spill, fire, or explosion could directly affect us. And I feel that the plan does not outline how they would prevent spills and leaks and containment and necessary measures to prevent such a disaster from happening. Thank you, Erica from Clean Air and Water Council.
Kathleen Byrd? No? Oh, okay. Next would be Brandon Roberts. Ms. Byrd, don't forget to spell your name for the stenographer, please.
Kathleen, K-A-T-H-L-E-E-N, Byrd, B-Y-R-D. And I have petitions here from Falls Township residents.
Make sure you speak in the microphone, please.
I have petitions here for Falls Township residents. Almost 4,000 from Falls. 1,400 from other.
Say it again.
And almost 1,400 other non-Falls residents, neighboring communities. That's not including online.
Mr. Roberts?
I'll see you.
There you are.
Oh, there we go.
Us.
Hi, my name is Brandon Roberts. I'm a resident of...
I'm sorry, Mr. Roberts, just spell your name real fast.
Yeah, that's B-R-A-N-D-O-N-R-O-B-E-R-T-S. Now, I've been a resident of Falls Township all my life. I've grown up here, and I would hate to see it be destroyed by a hazardous waste plant. You know, there's so many locations in America that you guys can go, but yet you pick right in between the Delaware River. Would you guys be able to answer me why that location would be the best?
Are we answering questions from the public?
It's up to you, Ms. Freeman. You don't have to. I said that earlier.
No pressure.
That you don't have to. You're under, I'm no obligation.
I'll just state that the property is zoned for this use. It's a permitted use at this site.
Although you guys are very...
Remember, please, as you're yelling, you're using up Mr. Roberts' time.
I'll keep it brief. Now, for this site, repeatedly, we've heard all night that, you know, the measurements aren't exact. You know, you guys are confining the space, and there's not even a staircase at the wall for firefighters or EMS services to get out. And I don't feel that's right. And that's my time. Thank you.
Amanda Vendetti?
Vendetti, V-E-N-D-E-T-T-I. And I asked a question a couple meetings ago that the DEP had no answer for. Hold on one second. Sorry. As there are multiple TRI facilities in the area, what happens when the industrial emissions allowance of building A combined with surrounding buildings B, C, and D within the industrial complex? Cumulatively, will it be over the emissions allowance?
Ms. Vendetti, this really, it really is appropriate question for DEP. Nobody up here has the authority, or, yes, it's just not our field. So, it really is, you know, that's, it is a regulatory question, really. But, you know, I'm sorry.
Okay.
That's okay. Donald Markeert. Joan Graves is on deck.
Good evening. My name's Don Markeert, M-A-R-K-E-R-T. I'm a 64-year resident of Falls Township. I live within less than three miles of the site that Elcon wants to locate. I'm opposed to the Elcon plant locating Falls Township or any other location for that matter. I urge the Falls Township Supervisors to reject the siding in the Elcon plant in Falls Township. We should be clear that it's pretty obvious to me that Elcon does not recycle one thing. They're going to disperse that crap all over the township and dispose it as solid waste in a landfill and leave a time bomb for the future. We can no longer kick the can into the future. Let's deal with this stuff. If you're going to recycle, recycle. Don't hide or disguise yourself in something you're not. I want to speak to the topic of accountability. I look around, and recently, there's some recent events that we've dealt with, specifically dealing with corporations that have impunity from the law and accountability from the law because they're shielded from the law. And we look at a case, for example, like Boeing, who builds an aircraft inherently unstable, and then tries to remediate that with some process of software adjustments to make it fly correctly. And then it kills people. Nobody's indicted, and they'll pay a fine and walk away. Now, we've seen this over and over again. During the course of my life, I've seen this over and over and over again, and I'm really kind of sick of it. On the March 5th or March 6th meeting with the DEP, there were some things that were fairly obvious to me. One is that the DEP does not have the resources necessary to provide the oversight that I heard Elcon talk about tonight. What was amazing to me is the fact that it looked to me like the DEP, the Pensbury Department of Environmental Protection, was only interested in going through a checklist process and a rubber stamp of the application for Elcon. You know what? They have a responsibility, constituency of this state, to do their job and not just rubber stamp crap. I look around, and I did some research, and some pretty interesting stuff. When you look at the superfund sites around the country, and specifically in Pennsylvania and Bucks County, and what's even more obvious to me is there's a lot of superfund sites, or several that I'm aware of, that don't even show up on the registry any longer. And what's interesting to me, there's one in Croydon, and this deals with hazardous waste, that was capped and a slurry wall was provided. That thing is still there, that waste is still there, yet the EPA considers that site remediated. That's not remediation. That's storage for the long term. That's a time capsule for the future that some idiots are going to open at some point and realize something's wrong. You know, what's just even more interesting is, after that site was completed, the people, the company in charge of that landfill were contacted, I'm sorry, were contacted by a governmental body to try to site a sports complex and a playground on that site. So, I urge you once again, reject this. Don't allow Elcon to cite their facility here in Falls Township. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Joan Graves, just a minute, I'm sorry, Ms. Graves, Seema Cosmi is next, just want to make that clear. But, no, 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 after you, I'm sorry, after you. So, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. Initially, I, oh, I'm sorry, my name is Joan Graves, and I'm a Falls Township resident. G-R-A, B as in Victor, E-S. Is that part of my three minutes?
No.
Okay, good. All right, so anyway, since the last couple of times that I've spoken, I decided to look at the zoning in Falls Township, and I went through the different codes. And this facility is zoned NPM, which is a materials processing and manufacturing district, and the purpose and the intent, it says in the code, is to protect the existing areas in the township devoted to integrated large-scale industrial production, et cetera, et cetera. But I wanted, what I wanted to know was, under the manufacturing zoning that this is classified as, what products is Elcon producing that is a requirement for this zoning? And then also, and also, in the zoning, it states, whoops, sorry, it states that water treatment and sanitary and industrial waste treatment facilities accessory to or servicing principal permitted uses located in the NPM. So, I didn't think this was water treatment. I think that they were processing hazardous waste. So, anyway, that was just the beginning. And I had a lot of other comments to make relative to everything that everybody was saying. What I'd like to do is just reiterate what I had stated in several other meetings, some of the parents here from the particular school I'm going to discuss. So, let's revisit our previous conversation regarding the school adjacent to the Egress ramp on Tyron Road. There have been several trash trucks incidents in the past, and it will only take one at that location to prove harmful to these children. During one of my weekly pickups at the school, and my grandson goes there, I stood and looked through the trees and could see the vehicles passing along 13 and proceeding down the ramp. It is very disconcerting to think that these trucks would be so close to the children playing on the grass adjacent to the ramps. Individuals in this room, living in the area adjacent to the school, should take a look and think, what if these were my children in harm's way? Would I do everything in my power to stop this plan? And this school is also used for after-school program called Kids Time. Now, there's one other thing that came out this week. The air quality for Bucks County, the American Lung Association, released its annual state-of-the-art report, and Bucks County got an F, and the orange days for pollution were 35. So, I would like to present to the board a petition in opposition to the proposed location of the Elcon facility. And this has been signed by people from Falls, Newtown Township, Morrisville... And this has been signed by people from Falls, Newtown Township, Morrisville, Yardley, Lowetown, all the areas that service this school. Thank you.
Okay, Seema Kazmi, make sure you spell your name, please.
Seema, S-E-E-M-A, Kazmi, K-A-Z, M as in Mary, I. Thank you, Falls Township Supervisors, for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dr. Seema Kazmi, and I'm from the Penns Grant neighborhood in Falls Township. I attended freshman year of my high school in this very building 20 years ago. I come back here today to express my staunch opposition to building Elcon in our community. According to the Pennsylvania Constitution, Article 1, Section 27, the people have a right to clean air, pure water, and for the preservation, for the preservation of the natural, scenic, historic, and aesthetic values of the environment. I believe that the proposed location of Elcon violates my right for clean air. My house is precisely 6.1 miles from the proposed location of 100 Dean Seaver's Place. This would be within the 30-mile radius that would be affected by toxic fumes emitted from the proposed Elcon plant. As stated in Elcon's February 2019 submission to the state, such fumes would include carbon monoxide, lead, sulfur dioxide, and particulate matter. According to the Pennsylvania Supreme Court case Robinson Township versus the Commonwealth, decided in 2013, every part of the government, whether it's local, city, or county, has a legal duty to protect the people's constitutional right to clean air and water. It's not just, it's, it's not just the state's job. In Elcon's October 2018 submission, Elcon wants permission to emit 10 tons of hydrochloric acid, which can lead to acidic rain. This can result in air particles that are harmful to our health. Falls Township Supervisors, I am making a personal appeal to you not to allow Elcon into our community. Thank you.
Sandra Gartner. Matthew Ballant is after that.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Gartner, S-A-N-D-R-A, last name is G-A-R-T-N-E-R. Good evening, Chairman Harvey and fellow board members, staff, thank you for your time and service tonight. Ms. Kim Freeman. Good evening. Earlier this evening, you stated that you are in no rush to conclude Elcon's proposal. There seems to be no limit to how many times you will be revising and submitting, revising and submitting, revising and submitting. There also seems to be nothing that you are not willing to say you will do in order for us to allow Elcon to open up its facility here. I don't know if you are a mother. I'm pretty sure you have close family members to you. And I ask you to put yourself in our situation, because for the past five years, most especially the past five months, we have gone to sleep, wondering if we have to move out of the town that we grew up in, wondering if we can bathe our children in the water that might be contaminated in the near future, and wondering if we will be able to breathe the air. So I ask you, while you're here professionally, to please have an open heart and an open mind to what we are going through. Thank you for your time, and thank you.
Matthew Ballant is next. I think it's Ballant. No? No, Matthew Ballant. Gloucester, excuse me, Hampton Drive? No? Okay. Tony Battiste. Gloria Latuma is after that.
Tony, T-U-N-I, Battiste, B-A-T-T-I-S-T-E. I was listening to Elcon's presentation, and I have some questions on that, and there are 20 trucks that you're expecting daily, which, if you're not mixing them, will need 20 separate tanks, and you're going to process each of those every day. It's a lot. One tank is supposed to hold, according to you, a tanker plus rainfall. Well, if you're talking rainfall, that means that tank is going to be opened. So that means on summer days when it's 105 degrees out there, all the stuff that's in that tank is going to start evaporating, spreading wherever the winds blow it. Three, you're reusing water within the facility. If you're getting 20 trucks a day, and you're reusing that, every time you get 20 more trucks, you're getting more. You're going to drown in about three weeks. Um, four, how are you confirming what's in the trucks? Are you going to taste it, smell it, or test it? And if you're going to test it, how long is it going to take to test? Number five, you're saying you're not mixing any truck contents, well, I hope that's so, but if there's an accident, what happens? Are we going to have an explosion because some of the chemicals aren't ones that should be mixed? And number six, your only facility so far is in Israel. You have a history there, and by the way, it's in the desert. You have a history of violations at your facility in Israel. So are we going to expect violations here as just simply a cost of doing business? I hope not. So anyhow, to the board, you have been elected to represent the township of Falls. The people elected you to represent them, so you are morally obligated to do that. You should also be morally obligated to support our neighbors who have passed resolutions to not support Elcon. We are trusting you and praying that you will make a decision to represent both the township and our neighbors, and for our health, safety, and welfare. Don't sell your souls. Vote No Elcon.
Just after Mrs. Latuma will be Jolie Wilkinson. But, go ahead, Ms. Latuma, you're up. Uh, make sure you spell your name.
Uh, Latuma, L-I-T-U-M-A, first name is Gloria. And I'm so out of my comfort zone, but this is worth it.
Go ahead, speak up, Mrs. Latuma, sorry.
Okay. Falls Township is my home. It is the place I chose to raise my children. It is the place I welcome my grandchildren to visit. It contains the schools, parks, and especially neighbors that mean so much to me. I think about all the phrases attached to that word "home." Home is where the heart is. A person's home is their castle. Home sweet home. There's no place like home. And then I try to reconcile that picture of a comforting place, a respite from danger, a sanctuary, with the picture that is being presented of a township putting its citizens at risk, particularly the most vulnerable, elderly and children. By happenstance, I was in attendance at the Falls Supervisors' meeting, February 4th, 2014, when Elcon presented its initial sales pitch. During a question-and-answer segment, Mr. Rocco, I believe, asked the Elcon representative, Dr. Elgat, about the environmental dangers associated with this business. Dr. Elgat said, and I quote, "If you don't operate it correctly, anything can happen." Again, according to my notes at that meeting, this Falls Township facility will be the first plant of its kind in the U.S. Certainly, red flags should be raised high. I must pause here and ask our Board of Supervisors, how can we possibly allow this to happen? There are no amounts of money or job creation that can justify putting our family at risk, although I thank you for the opportunity. Our air quality has the second-lowest rating in the state. Drive up Route 13, as I do every morning, and view the caravan of trucks hauling waste, toxins, and other cargo that already wreak havoc on that road, not to mention the surrounding air and water. Yes, Falls Township does have some wonderful things going for it. Pensbury Schools, Pensbury Manor, hopefully our Board of Supervisors, Fallsington, the Township Park, and especially its citizens that are here this evening. However, the writing is on the wall. If Elcon is allowed to set up shop, we might need to rethink some of those slogans, those home slogans that I mentioned earlier. Perhaps for Falls Township, "There's no place like home" to make you sick would be more appropriate, or "A person's home is their chem lab." I truly hope that it does not come to this. In conclusion, Falls Township is my home, and I wonder how many of the Elcon owners, employees, lawyers can say the same thing. As I understand it, Israel provides national health care for its citizens. Unfortunately, the U.S. does not.
Hi, my name is Jolie Wilkinson, J-O-E-L-Y-W-I-L-K-I-N-S-O-N. And by the way, I'm speaking for Shivani Patel. I'm saying the rest of what she was saying before she was interrupted. Okay. So, of the words of my friend Shivani Patel, "Yesterday, I watched a video of Greta Thunberg, who is a 13-year-old climate change activist, and her words cannot match what I feel right now as I speak. She said, 'You say you love your children above all else, and yet you are stealing their future right in front of their very eyes.'" Congratulations. But, um, "And Elcon would negatively impact my generation and all the generations coming after. According to the American Living Association, in terms of the ozone levels, Bucks County has the worst air quality in this state. In history class, we learned about previous environmental tragedies as, as Love Canal, and I am determined not to let history repeat. I am standing up with my peers, and this is my generation, because this is our earth, our responsibility, and our future. And I don't know about you, but I am outraged, and likewise.'" But, now, to say my own piece, again, my name is Jolie Wilkinson, and I'm a senior at Pensbury. I'm a known renegade. Representatives, if you choose to abandon your responsibility of representing the people and feed corporate America, are you aware that you are choosing the good of the bank account over the good of the people? And Elcon representatives, if I were to come to you and say, "My child, jovial and full of promise, died of tuberculosis," how would that make you feel? Put yourself in a position to feel the grief of several diseased men, women, and children, but I guess you're used to it. And also, also, every day, I go to Pensbury Manor. I go to Manor Lake, and I write. I love writing. Writing is my passion. Art creativity is my passion. I sit on the dock every single day, and also, on Monday, I saw a trash truck turned over, and it was, it was on an accident, like, it was in an accident. It happens so frequently. And by the way, if I die, or if my children die of tuberculosis or cancer, you guys all will have these really fancy reserve signs front row at my open casket. So, welcome. I hope you'll, I hope you'll be there.
Okay, those, um, those are the names on the resident sign-in sheet. We'll move to the non-resident sign-in sheet. Judy Lang, Ivyland. Brian, I think it's Lackowitz, is next.
Good evening. I'm Judy Lang, L-A-N-G, and I live in Northampton Township. I'm not an environmentalist, and I'm not a scientist.
Speak up, Mrs. Lang, sorry.
Okay, sorry. Should I start over? I'm not a scientist, I'm not an environmentalist, but I am a person with common sense. Common sense says not to build a waste treatment facility so close to the Delaware River, where 2 million people depend on their water. Common sense says not to build a facility that has the potential to add pollution to our already severely depleted pollution. Common sense says not to have hazardous waste trucks on our roads going to unknown locations to dispose of waste or bring untreated waste to Falls Township. If you want a treatment facility, put it in a location that is harmless, not harmful to people. We urge you not to vote for Elcon, to use your common sense, not no sense. Remember, Three Mile Island wasn't supposed to happen, but as we all know, it did. Thank you.
My name is Brian Lackowitz, B-R-I-A-N-L-A-C-H-E-W-I-T-Z. Live at 507 Concord Lane in the Headington section of Fairless Hills, a mere 500 yards outside of your township, and I'm a lifelong resident of this, this area. I believe, as a libertarian, that every landowner has the right to use their land as they like, so long as they comply with each and every code in the township ordinances, SALDO. I believe it's the responsibility of each applicant, the landowner, the planning board members, council members, zoning officers, to, to live to the letter of the law and the spirit of the law when we're reviewing any project, especially a risky first-time trial offer. Using local SALDO zoning, the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection defers essentially everything back to you. So you have a massive weight on your shoulders. Elcon is not the landowner, as they stated. U.S. Steel is. They have an option. U.S. Steel's not requesting disvariances. They are. And what's interesting is tonight, the attorney for Elcon stipulated that they aren't asking for any variances or waivers. And I believe this represents, quite frankly, a fraudulent statement, because one needs to get into the actual thing that they're proposing and a look at SALDO. The Bucks County Planning Commission Letter of 226, 2019, identified this as a hazardous waste recycling facility. And they issued a number of issues, but it's a hazardous waste recycling facility. Each and every zoning code for any and all commercial uses for real estate in Falls Township, and I've looked at them, precludes anything to do with hazardous waste. If you look at zoning code 20927 LI, Light Industry, 21 approved uses in LI, none of them involve hazardous waste recycling. In zoning code 20928 PIP, the Planned Industrial Park, it lists 27 approved uses, plus six conditional uses, none of which includes hazardous waste recycling. In zoning 209-29 HI, Heavy Industrial District, it states, "The purpose and intent of the industrial district is to include large-scale industrial office operations, including principal uses of office, industrial, and manufacturing, product distribution and warehousing, transportation terminals or handling, electrical, electrical substations, building material yards, marine port and terminal facilities, and any use of the same general characteristics of the above." It even states that...
Yep, you have to, yep, that's me in, Mr. Lack, I'm sorry. You made your point, that was the three minutes, though. I'm sorry.
Okay. Who's next?
Al Angelini.
Al?
We don't allow, we don't allow passage of, of minutes. This is not the United States Congress, sorry.
Can I, can I pass this document to you?
Al Angel, yes, you may. Mr. Angelini, make sure, don't forget to spell your name.
Thank you. I'm going to finish this. My name is Al Angelini. I live in Headington, Fairless Hills. I've been a resident of Bucks County for 68 years, and first of all, I want to thank the Board... And first of all, I want to thank the Board for handling this very professionally. Also, thank the Elcon people for their patience, and of course, the people seated here, this is their home, so you can understand the passion that is being emitted. But I, I’d like to mention that tomorrow’s promised to no one, and yet we’re here predicting what spills and what can be done and how we’re going to handle it. I don’t think anyone in this building can give you a guarantee as to any, not only the leakage, but trucks overturning. I mean, are you kidding me? They’re coming from 10 different states. They’re not gonna get here in one day? That’s a big issue. So that, that’s an issue, especially if using Tiberian Road. If you ever look at that, it’s already got the grooves in it. But I want to bring up one point, which seemed to fall through the cracks, I didn’t, I don’t know if anybody mentioned it, about the Philadelphia Water Department in 2015, mentioning that calling the proposed industrial waste treatment plant in Falls a risk to the high-quality drinking water supply that millions of Philadelphians and others in the Delaware Valley region have come to expect. It used a model that identified that this was going to be a problem, and that if there was leakage, or there wasn’t contamination, it could impact up to 60% of the drinking water in this area. So your decision tonight just doesn’t affect us. It affects a very large region. And I don’t think these people in the other area understand what’s happening here tonight. So I thank you for moving in the direction you apparently are going to move, hopefully. And, and even if there’s litigation, always remember, you, you’re right. You can fight it. No means no. So, good luck.
We have Finn Connor, and then Tom Tracy.
Hello, I’m Finn Connor, spelled F-I-N-N-C-O-N-N-O-R. Good evening. I’m Finn Connor, and I’m a student here at Pensbury High School. I’m speaking today to urge the Township Board of Supervisors to deny Elcon’s proposal to build its hazardous waste treatment and storage facility in Falls Township. The American Lung Association’s 167-page State of the Air Report states, “The Bucks County has the highest orange ozone levels and poorest air quality in the entire state of Pennsylvania, including that of two major cities, which is absolutely unheard of. The Clean Air Council and scientific journals Waste Management and Fizz.org state that the odor from these waste plants is noticeable to the residents of the communities surrounding these waste sites, and particularly to those closest to the site. This can both worsen our quality of life and lower our property values. But the largest issue is not about a smell or a property value. It’s about our own lives. A similar plant to the one that Elcon is proposing to build was built in Love Canal, a suburban town in Niagara Falls, not unlike our own town. Over 10 years, the landfill served as a site for 20,000 tons of hazardous chemicals. The methods that were used to contain this waste and keep it away from the citizens of Love Canal were said to be entirely effective, much like the impenetrable basin we learned about today. But they were not. Following an accident in construction and heavy rainfall, leakage began. Upon visiting Love Canal, an administrator of the EPA stated, “Corroding waste dispersal thums could be seen breaking up through the grounds of backyards. Trees and gardens were turning black and dying. One entire swimming pool had been popped up from its foundation, afloat now on a small sea of chemicals. Puddles of noxious substances were pointed out to me by the residents. Some of these puddles were in their yards, some were in their basements, others were outside on school grounds. Everywhere, the air had a faint choking smell. Children returned from play with burns on their hands and faces. Soon after this accident, the rate of birth defects skyrocketed at Love Canal. Deafness, the presence of cleft palates, extra rows of teeth, visual impairments, enlarged body parts, and developmental delays existed at a significantly higher rate in Love Canal than the rest of the country due to exposure to this waste. In addition, according to a longitudinal study by the New York Department of Health, cancers of the kidney and bladder were more common among Love Canal residents than the outside populations, especially for those who were exposed to the waste as children. These are similar to those of other studies of hazardous waste sites that we know about the cancer-causing effects of chemicals found at Love Canal. Within 10 years, the same amount of time, Love Canal accumulated 20,000 tons of waste. Elcon’s proposed plant will hold 105 times that amount. 20 truckloads of hazardous waste will be traveling on our roads every single day. Elcon itself has had to perform spill modeling themselves, admitting that spillage is a risk. A single accident on the road or leak in the storage plant can have catastrophic effects. While there are policies in place-
You just want to finish your sentence? Go ahead.
Um, yeah. While there are policies, policies in place to make sure that hazardous waste is safely managed, there remains the question of liability regarding accidents occurring from waste disposal previously. If health-related dangers are detected, what are we as a people willing to spend to correct the situation? How much risk are we willing to accept? Who is going to pick up the tab? The well-being of Bucks County is not being considered, just as it was not for the citizens of Love Canal. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tom Tracy, T-O-M-T-R-A-C-Y. Been a resident of Lower Meekfield for about 24 years now. My three daughters have come through here in, in Pensbury, and I don’t have anything prepared other than statements from the heart. First of all, I want to thank everybody in the room who has come here tonight in support of this initiative. Second of all, I want to thank everybody up on stage and down on the floor here. You’ve put a lot of heart and soul into what you’ve done. At the end of the day, it’s going to be your actions speak louder than your words, and most importantly, you have to put your head on the pillow tonight and know you’ve done the right thing, so please do the right thing.
Okay, next, two speakers, I think I’m gonna get this right. Dylan Chang, I think, is the way, trying to read the spelling. Dylan Chang, and then Catherine Panzita. Okay? Mr. Chang, make sure you spell your name.
Hi, I’m Dylan Chang. That’s a, should I spell the first and the last out clearly?
Yep.
Okay, and that’s D-Y-L-A-N for the first and T-C-H-A-N-G for the last. So I’m a student at Pensbury High School, and, okay. I wanted to speak here because, you know, as a student, I’m really concerned about my future, and especially with, when it comes to issues of the environment. So, I especially wanted to mention something, I think it was mentioned a few times, but it, you know, no one really went into detail about it yet. So what, what actually happened back in Israel? Because, you know, we had an Elcon plant, I think it was about a third the size of the, the one that’s going to be built here, but there was an Elcon plant that was built there. And, you know, kids, we’re getting thyroid cancer in Israel because this plant is being built. And we’re having, you know, it, what is it? It’s something like 20 trucks a day being trucked in here with all this hazardous waste. Now, we have, you know, good amount of assurances from the company, oh, you’re gonna have this, you know, retaining wall, you know, but as the, one of the other speakers said, you know, Love Canal, they got tons of assurances. And what happened? Well, you know, those assurances didn’t exactly pan out as intended. You know, the company said, said, said what they said, you know, perhaps they tried their best, but in the end, we saw what happened. And i- in the end, this is about, you know, this is about dollars. This is about money. This is about profit for the, this institution, Elcon. And, you know, we can have all the assurances in the world, but in the end, when those trucks come and we have got the Delaware River right there, it’s gonna stop. You know, we, we can have a whole bunch of assurances, but in the end, this is about our lives here. This is about our water. This is about our lives. And we’re, we’re weighing 50 jobs and, you know, profits for shareholders against the lives of all the people in this room. I think I know who I’m standing with. I think I know what I’m going to choose. And I hope that you, the supervisors, are going to choose to stand with us, all the people in this community. You know, I’ve got, I’ve got two years left of this high school, and I want to live a life of dignity. I want to live a life where I know that I, I’m not going to, you know, get cancer in my thyroid at this age, like there’s, there’s kids did in Israel, and I want everyone else here to live a happy, healthy life. And we’re not going to let a company’s desire for profit stop then. I hope, I hope you won’t either. Thank you.
Five years coming, first time to come here and following this whole scenario from both sides. I’m gonna leave my questions right to the issue in front of you guys as a, as a courtesy. Tonight, we’re here to talk about the land development. Well, I have a question. From going to some of the other things, and maybe the applicant, or the applicant’s attorney, or if there’s somebody who actually owns the site, from USX, whatever you call it, we talk about the terrain and how we have to come in and, and make this soil and dump, I think the number was 70,000 cubic feet?
Yards.
Yards. So, is that site currently receiving that fill? Have, so nobody has touched any of that?
Correct.
Okay, so then it was all a lie? If we saw through Marsville, lots of dump trucks coming off and going right down the street to that property? They, they had to be going to another site or somewhere else?
Right.
Okay. So they haven’t touched it. I was surprised you couldn’t do anything through zoning. You’re in agreement that they’re 100% in compliance with your Fall zoning? Then if the application for tonight, they had their questions, they could have given responses, then just put the no to it, and don’t bring everybody out again. Thank you.
The next two speakers are, next two speakers are Steve CK and Barb Stakes, I think?
Hi, my name is Steve CK. I’m from Newtown. One good reason for you to-
Mr. CK, you have to spell your name for those-
I’m okay. Steve C-I-C-K-A-Y. One good reason to vote against this bonehead project is that you won’t have to listen to me anymore. I, I think for the last six months, I’ve been bugging you, and that’s cruel and unusual punishment. So, please, vote against this thing, and, and you won’t have to see me again. But I do want to compliment you for listening to the people. We’ve been coming every month, and you graciously allowed the people to speak. I don’t like small government. I don’t like big government. I like good government. And good government guarantees the health and safety of this community. And, and you have shown that by letting us talk. You listened, and now the EAC and the Planning Committee represented the people who spoke, not the special interests who just want to make some big bucks, but the people who came to you and, and said this was a horrible thing. And those commissions recommended to kill this project, and I thank them, and I hope that trend continues tonight. I heard a lot of boring testimony from good people who had a lot of facts, engineers and environmentalists, but last week, I heard from a tree trimmer who had the wisest objection to this. He works here in Falls, and he said, “The simple question, common sense, what is the benefit of Elcon? What is it good for? Absolutely nothing. It was just so obvious that nobody’s gonna benefit from this, except the faraway company that wants to make big bucks. A few jobs, maybe? Maybe 50? You know, you should better go to solar. In California, they just mandated that every new house should have solar panels. They’re paying 50 bucks an hour. They can’t find people out there. That’s the kind of jobs we need here. Not, not a poison factory. Not a poison factory. So I just got to introduce my friend Captain Obvious. Captain Obvious, I, I got, I got four questions for you, Captain Obvious. Is it obvious that it is a dangerous, risky, and bonehead idea to build a hazardous waste facility so close to a river that supplies drinking water to millions of people? Captain Obvious says, “Yep, or my name ain’t Captain Obvious.” Is it obvious that it is a dangerous, risky, and bonehead idea to burn tons of poison into the air of a community whose air quality is the worst in the state already? Yep, it’s like, is the Pope Catholic? Is it obvious that it’s a dangerous, risky, and bonehead idea to drive 20 truckloads of poison each day on our local roads, near our schools, businesses, and homes? Yup, it’s like, does a bear poop in the woods? It’s obvious that there is no benefit to the people of Bucks County to build this risky, dangerous industry in our precious historic community. Yes, it’s like, should leaders protect their people and their community? I hope you do so, and if Bob Harvey votes to kill this thing, Bob Harvey for County Commissioner, hooray for Harvey, the next County Commissioner of Bucks County!
Barbara Stakes, B-A-R-B-A-R-A-S-T-A-K-E-S. I didn’t plan on speaking, so it’s pretty quick. Regardless of assurances by Elcon that the list of chemical components, the list of chemical components, is too unwieldy for the average citizen without a chemical science degree to trust. And excuse me for not trusting big corporations that appear to have their only interest is their own pockets. A spill from one of these trucks is enough to contaminate our drinking water. We have PSA, or PFAS contamination up in Warrington, which is only a few miles from here, and now we’re gonna contaminate the Delaware River down this end? And then they’re gonna find either the trucking company or Elcon. That’s the only remedy. It’s always the remedy. Find them. Let’s get some money. You cannot drink a dollar bill.
Ladies and gentlemen, people, if people don’t wish to speak, they don’t have to. I mean, but we, people signed up, and we have about 40 minutes left, a public comment, so we’re gonna give people a chance. If they choose to speak, they did sign up. Gina Sullivan and Kelly Ripkema, I think is the name after that.
My name is Gina Sullivan, G-I-N-A-S-U-L-L-I-B-A-N. I’m here this evening to read a statement from New Jersey State Assemblyman Herb Conaway in the 7th Legislative District. For the past 21 years, I’ve had the honor to represent the 7th Legislative District of New Jersey. My district is made up of 17 towns in Burlington County, 11 of which are located directly on the Delaware River. I’ve always strongly opposed the construction of the Elcon facility at the Keystone Industrial Complex in Falls Township due to the unknown potential health, environmental, and safety hazards this kind of facility can have on this densely populated area. As a physician and director of the Burlington County Health Department, I have seen the impact of air and water pollution on an individual’s health. The hazardous waste facility this will be, the hazardous waste this will be processing has the potential to increase air and water pollution in this region, exposing the population to a number of health risks. According to the Elcon, according to Elcon’s application, they will be receiving between 17 and 25 truckloads of roughly 268 hazardous chemicals from 10 neighboring states on a daily basis. Annually, we will see anywhere between 6,205 to 9,125 trucks carrying volatile organic chemicals like benzene, methylbenzene, formaldehyde, and others that are linked to cancer. Handling that volume of chemicals known to be harmful to human health could cause irreversible damage to our region. The construction of this type of facility along the Delaware River and the nearly 200,000 tons of- tons of waste it will receive each year could pose a threat to a vital source of drinking water for over 8 million people in our region. I respectfully request that you vote no on this matter.
Hi, I'm Kelly Ripkema, K-E-L-L-Y-R-Y-P-K-E-M-A. I'm a resident of Hamilton Township, New Jersey. I appreciate your questions and how they show that you've really considered the application. I also appreciate this time for public comment because folks like me, who live in New Jersey, are watching this. Well, I can speak for myself, I am watching this with a great deal of concern and not a whole lot that I can do about it. So, thank you for this time. Elcon has really done its level best to present its facility in a positive light, but there are several things that just really don't add up to me. You know, this is... I've gotten the feeling that this is like, you know, new technology. It doesn't necessarily make me feel comfortable about that. New technology, state-of-the-art, also maybe means that it's not as well-tested. This company has had two other facilities, and one of them had to be shut down. I'm, I guess, encouraged to hear that they're not going to be considered a major polluter by the EPA because they're producing less than 25 tons per year of smog-producing chemicals. They're only going to produce 23.4 tons per year, with their smoke stacks running maybe about 23 hours per day. So, this one thing that confuses me, Elcon says it won't impact air quality in Bucks County or surrounding counties or areas in Pennsylvania. I'm guessing that that means that they're thinking the prevailing winds will just blow it into Hamilton where I live. Elcon has taken measures to minimize risk to the Delaware River, but there's really little margin for error. If there was a spill, and by the way, I do find it interesting that they're still installing groundwater wells to test this, but if there was a spill, the impact would be far-reaching and long-lasting. Just a reminder that the Delaware River is tidal here, so if... With water shifting several miles back and forth, so a spill won't just get flushed downstream, it will come back and visit us twice each day for a long time. But my biggest... My greatest risk, my greatest concern comes from how the chemicals will be transported. I... Lots of other people have talked about the 20 trucks per day. That's one truck every hour. My understanding is that they have plans to increase the size of their facility, effectively doubling it to 140,000 square feet. I wonder, does that mean they're going to increase to 40 trucks per day, or one truck every half-hour? And they mentioned they're not going to be using Pennsylvania Avenue. I wonder about Route 13, Van Suyver Lake, all the people who use that, the housing developments, the schools that are all along there. Important Town Road. So, what route will they be taking? Elcon hasn't disclosed that. All these other assurances, they say they're going to ship its waste to specialized landfills. Well, what if it doesn't? What if they decide to start accepting fracking waste? What if they decide to not adhere to that pollution standard and simply pay the fine? What is our recourse if they decide to not uphold those assurances? It's placing a lot of trust in a company that has no social investment in this community, just a financial interest.
Okay. I'm having trouble with the next name. I think it's Linda, it's someone on Newtown Langhorne Road. I'm having trouble reading the name, I apologize. I don't know if any person's here. I think it's Linda Pavlicek, maybe? No? No? Okay, sorry. Barb Mahassel?
Mahalski.
Mahalski. Ruthanne Tickle Logan?
Barbara Mahalski, M-I... I mean, M-I-C-H-A-L-S-K-I. I'm a Lenape descendant, this is my homeland. I was taught to be a caretaker of this earth. We need to learn from our past mistakes. The land is already contaminated. Elcon, how many communities has turned down your proposals? How many resolutions are against you? You promised that you won't... You will not add any more toxic waste, but you say you promise. How do we know you're going to keep your promise? Why do you pick a place where families live? Why do you pick a place near a water supply? There's no room for error. Our air quality is already a F. The surrounding areas, Philadelphia, Montgomery, Northampton, Chester Counties are already a F. You keep using the word volunteer. Not... How long you going to volunteer, and then you decide you're not going to volunteer? All this information. What makes... What makes you think you're going to keep doing it? We don't need broken promises. What about evaporation? What happens, you say, about all these findings? When they reach negative results, what are you going to do? Will you stop or you continue? What's the date on the floor plan? Will you live in a house next to this facility with your loved ones? When a disaster happens, will you be there to clean it up? Is it true that your facility in Israel had violations for air and ground contamination? Is it true that you had to move your facility? We need to heal the earth, especially in Bucks County, for our family, for our friends, for the two-leggeds, for the thin ones. For all of us. How can you live with yourselves? We already have 35 orange days in Bucks County. With this facility, how many more orange days will there be? How many more red days will there be? I have spoken for the ones that can't speak, for our future generation that's to come, and I'm asking, Falls Township, for all these years, the government has done nothing to stand by treaties for Indians. Do me a favor, support this earth, support the life ways, support the Indians. Wanishi.
Hi, I'm Ruthanne Tickle Logan, R-U-T-H-A-N-N-E-T-I-C-K-E-L-L-O-G-A-N. I'm a Lower Mayfield resident, and I'm president of an organization called Arrows, and we support the Native people. And there's a national honoring going on now. We'd like to acknowledge the Lenape people. They are the indigenous inhabitants of this land, and Blue Jay is the granddaughter of a chief. So, the one focus that the Lenape people have is the protection of the water and the land in this area, and I hope everybody would respect that. For me, the price of Elcon could be the health of my children, my own personal health, the loss of my property values, the beauty of my community. I've noticed that the eagles, the bald eagles are back now, and they eat out of the Delaware River, which this area serves 15 million people, that water supply is critical. We drink out of it. I have a medical background and science background, and I know what some of these chemicals that are going out there do to the body. And for me, Elcon's a five-letter word for cancer. And, you know, I take that very seriously. You know, birth defects is another potential hazard. So, there is no room for error. I'm not convinced that people have the expertise they need or the safety precautions in place to keep us safe. And I think I'm just going to end by saying that the Native people end by saying the people have spoken. This is a government for the people and by the people. The people have spoken. Thank you for giving us the time.
Okay, the next two names are Gerald Williams, and after that is Michelle Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Gerald Williams, G-E-R-A-L-D-W-I-L-L-I-A-M-S, I can spell my own name. And I'm an attorney. I have the honor of representing Delaware Riverkeeper Network, which, as you know, is an organization dedicated to the protection of the Delaware River and related waterways and lands around it. We have submitted to the board previously the network's position on legality of the proposed Elcon site, including its problems with... Under the applicable zoning ordinances. I won't repeat that since we have already submitted it. I do want to respond to three points, small points that were made that I think are important for the board's consideration. One is, the very toxic nature of the materials that this facility will handle, and they really are very, very toxic. Elcon itself listed them, and we submitted them to the board. Their toxicity and the risk they pose to the environment and the Delaware River is not changed by their being in water. And their solution in water does not solve their toxicity. Second, even Elcon's assurances are really things that the board should consider negatively. The very small elevations of key inlets and outlets that they have above the 100-year floodplain really are meaningless in this era of climate change when we have 100-year storms and 500-year storms every other year. And their assurances such as they won't accept fracking waste, even though that will be a very profitable enterprise in the future, they won't accept waste by barge, even though they're practically on the Delaware River, they won't accept waste by rail, even though there's a spur there. These should be considered to be what they are, which are Elcon's voluntary statements today. There will be no legal restrictions on their ability to change or ask for permit amendments or to begin those practices in the future, once they are cited there, if they are cited there. These and all the considerations you've heard, we submit you should consider in light of something else you've heard a lot from a lot of different speakers, but which is a fundamental legal principle in this Commonwealth. Our constitution makes municipalities and you, the township, a trustee of the environment and the people who have to live within the environment, and it is an obligation that cannot be delegated and it cannot be deferred to the state or to anyone else. So, for all those reasons, all the reasons we've submitted, I know Michelle Adams, an engineer retained by us, will speak next. We urge you to vote no. Thank you.
After Mrs. Adams or Ms. Adams will be Jeff Tittle.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Adams. I'm a professional engineer with Malleo Design here on behalf of the Delaware Riverkeeper Network. I have prepared submitted comments that I believe have been provided to the board. I'd like to take this brief time to focus on a comment that Mr. Jones cited in his letter for citing Section 187-12 of your ordinance regarding that the applicant must consider the potential effects of inundation at this project's site based on existing conditions, culverts, and drainage channels in the vicinity of the ultimate discharge point, which in my opinion, as an engineer, has not been answered by the applicant. Just to build on what Mr. Jones was saying, the 100-year flood elevation in the Delaware near this equivalent to this site is about 17, 17 and 1/2 feet. The elevation of the berm for the stormwater system is 17.65. It's 16.25 is the elevation of the overflow berm, of the overflow spillway from the stormwater system, so it's lower than the 100-year flood. The only reason this site is not in the 100-year floodplain is because of the fill and material that's been placed there over the years. If that material were not there, this would be in the 100-year floodplain. And just to build on that, the FEMA 100-year floodplain is an engineering estimate based on past historical rainfall events. It does not take into account climate change. It does not take into account things like a storm surge, like we witnessed in Hurricane Sandy when it moved up northern Jersey and into New York. So, it doesn't account for those kinds of things. And for those reasons, the American Society of Civil Engineers technical documents and FEMA recommend the critical structures be at least two feet over the 100-year floodplain. This site is hydraulically connected to the Delaware River through Byles Creek and the system of culverts that Mr. Jones mentioned. We know that levees can fail, we know that fill fails, we know from what we've seen in Katrina in New Orleans, what we've seen in the Midwest just this past spring with areas flooding as levees and fill fail. This is a site that's subject to inundation and flooding and should be considered as such and is not the location for hazardous materials. Thank you for the opportunity.
Jeff Tittle, J-E-F-F-T-I-T-T-E-L, Director of the New Jersey Sierra Club. But I'm here tonight representing the 3 and 1/2 million Sierra Club members and supporters because this is ground zero in the battle against toxic waste and hazardous facilities. We are here today, and I just want to say that earlier that the high school student, yes, she did curse, but this is the obscenity of this application. I'm here today because I live in Lambertville, I work across the river in Trenton. In New Jersey, we have enough air pollution, we have enough water pollution, we have enough trucks with toxic waste on them. Our hazmat facilities in Trenton are already overstressed for the problems we have here. We don't need to come across the river and get more. And New Jersey has enough pollution, and so does Falls Township, and so does Pennsylvania. Between the two states, there's over 200 superfund sites. If this gets approved, this will be a future superfund site. Don't mark my word. Honesty. You know, my dad was a steelworker. He made things like bridges and tanks and automobiles, not toxic waste that's going into the air that we're all going to breathe, no matter what they say, because their promises are worth the legal documents they're not written on. They have no meaning. They're here to say anything to get this approval because once they're in the door, they can come in and double and triple and quadruple the size of the facility, bring in that fracking waste, because right now, they can't because the DRBC doesn't allow it, but if they do, they will be the first ones in the door to do it. We're here today because your job as supervisors, first and foremost, is to protect public health and safety. This is a disaster waiting to happen. This is an explosion waiting to happen. The only benefit that's going to happen to the people in the community are all the nice fire equipment you're going to have to buy to deal with something that might happen at this facility. And on top of it, when you're talking about 7,000... Excuse me, 7... I was going to say 7,000 dump trucks with the dirt, because that's what it's really going to take to go into this site, and a seven-foot wall that won't work. This is a toxic wall that will fail in a flood. Houston had three 500-year floods in five years. We had 2,000-year floods in New Jersey in two years. The Delaware River had 300-year floods year after back-to-back. There is no way that that wall will stand and that toxic waste won't end up in the river, and with that river being tidal, I'm also here talking about the 6-plus-million people who get drinking water in the Delaware, and the flow would bring it right up to the Trenton Treatment Plant or down to the Delran Plant, affecting 3 million people in New Jersey. We're here today because even the state of Israel says this plant is not kosher. That's why they find it. We're here today because your job in the constitution is the protection of life, liberty, and property, not life, liberty, and poison property. Say no, protect the people of this community, protect the people of New Jersey, protect the people of this region and this country by kicking Elcon out, because the name Elcon just means a con. Don't fall for that con. Vote no, protect the people of this area.
Okay, next two names are Patricia McCarron and Brad Lair.
Hello, my name is Patricia McCarron. It's M-C-C-A-R-R-O-N. And we have Brad Lair as our legal guide with Clean Air and Water Council, and we're here... We've been fighting Elcon for a number of years. We have a few submissions. Philadelphia Water Department, there was an article in Sunday's 2015 newspaper stating that it could be catastrophic for millions of people, that their water supply might be shut... be shut down for approximately four days. So we're, you know, very concerned with that, and we feel that, I feel and believe that the Falls Township supervisors are doing the right thing. I just have a very good feeling about it. I just feel that they want to care for their families and the whole entire Delaware Valley. We have resolutions to submit that are from, basically from three townships. It would be Newtown Borough, Newtown Township, and Upper Makefield. And all the other environmental groups have worked hard getting other resolutions from both sides of the river, from New Jersey and Pennsylvania. There's probably over a dozen resolutions stating why they would, every supervisor's offices want to protect their own people to have, you know, clean air and water.
My name is Bradford Lair. I'm an attorney, represent Clean Air and Water Council, and I thank you for your time tonight, and also thank you for what I think will be a positive vote in opposition to the Elcon application. Ms. McCarron just stated that we have these documents. I have them here. Just briefly what they are are resolutions from those three townships, which include representative supervisors just like yourself, representing over 30,000 Bucks County residents that also are opposed to this application. It's a little unique in this situation where you'd have other townships voting or signing resolutions, but in this case, they thought it important enough to have meetings, have open hearings where Elcon was invited, and then they had resolutions signed by those three townships representing over 30,000 Bucks County residents. In addition, we have, we do have a letter from the Philadelphia Water Department Director we think is very important. It's from 2015. He states in a letter, three-page letter, that the, an event could be catastrophic if there is a leak or damage to this plant. He uses the word catastrophic. I think it's been referred to by the other environmental groups, but generally what my understanding is what the Philadelphia Water Department is concerned with is the drinking water of close to 5 million people, 1.8 million of their own residents, and that's why, again, a unique situation where the City of Philadelphia Water Department would reach out and write a letter specifically addressing an application in Falls Township. A little unique, but so is the application itself. So I guess the point for the Clean Air Water Council is it is a regional issue. You do have additional people, elected officials and city officials behind your vote. Your position takes courage, but you are not alone. You've got townships behind you. You've got City of Philadelphia behind you. You have the region behind you. You have the State of New Jersey, many representatives behind you. So we are here for you. If necessary, we'll take party status. We, it's a nonprofit corporation. I wasn't sure how that night was going to go, whether there'd be waivers required or whether there would be opportunity for party status. We would like party status. We've had a couple of our members testify their locations of the site, so if that was necessary, we were going to ask for that. But apparently, it may not be necessary, so with that, I would just like to, you know, submit these documents for the record. I have copies for Elcon if they like them, and we, again, we appreciate your time, effort, and the good judgment that we believe you're about to make. Thank you.
Next two names are Joanne Panone and I think it's Kip Cherry.
Joanne Panone, P A N N O N E, from Robbinsville, New Jersey. Also a member of New Jersey Sierra Club, Delaware Riverkeeper, Environment New Jersey, and so on and so on and so on. I'm here to request denial because I see this plant causing your town becoming another Flint, Michigan, and having water problems. This has been a long time in the permit process and for good reason. The Philadelphia Water Department takes 60% of the water for the City of Philadelphia from the Delaware, and they've asked the Elcon project be rejected. Given the risks of the multiple-day contamination of tidal drinking water supplies to millions of people located downstream, I think this is a good enough reason. Oyster Creek Nuclear Power Plant was built 40 years ago. When they built that nuclear power plant, they promised that no harm was going to come to the environment. As soon as they turned it on, the hot water came out, and they destroyed Barnegat Bay. The fish floated, the boats got woodworms, the things that were not conducive to Barnegat Bay just showed up en masse, and next thing you know, we had to have the Barnegat Bay, the Clean, what's it called, Barnegat Bay Keepers. Anyhow, because of that, when will we learn? We have to stay no. Thank you.
My name is Kip Cherry, K I P C H E double R Y, and I'm also with the Sierra Club. I'm the Central Conservation Chair for Central New Jersey. We're in Mercer County. We have a lot in common because we are in Mercer County, Burlington, and Bucks County, all non-abtainment areas for ozone. And this is one of the big reasons why we're so concerned about this facility, because this facility will make the problem worse. Ozone causes many health problems, developmental problems, reproductive problems, lung cancer, and heart damage. It's not a small thing. It is a huge thing, and we've been heading and continue to head in the wrong direction. Our ozone situation is getting worse. Also, in terms of potable water, we're all concerned about making sure we continue to have potable water on the Delaware, from the Delaware, and this facility presents huge risks. The secondary containment area obviously has huge engineering problems, and if it should go in a storm, a flood, an explosion, toxic materials would then be released into the Delaware. Talk about a holding a stormwater basin, but that would not be sufficient, I don't think, to hold toxic materials in a huge accident. Also, of course, we have all these tanker trucks that are not within the even discussion related to Pennsylvania DEP, because they claim they're not really regulating those trucks, that they're a separate issue. So no matter what happens, if Pennsylvania DEP should give permits for this, there would be more toxins released. It's not a zero situation. There would be more toxins released. And Pennsylvania DEP has also said they cannot look at cumulative issues. We don't understand that at all. We challenge that, but that's been their claim. Also, we met with, had a conference call with the Jersey DEP yesterday, and they said that there should be an emergency response plan, that this is required under RECA. So I don't understand the confusion when, you know, that apparently Elcon had to be requested to provide such a program. You must provide such a plan, and it must be detailed. Finally, I would like to just say that your planning board voted against this. I think you should take the recommendation of your planning board, and you should not think that 50 jobs are worth the terrible environmental damage that this would create. And one more thing, we are getting now 75% more precipitation than we did before. The, as was mentioned, the floodplain maps are really no good, and I would think that this facility is definitely in the 100-year floodplain. The floodplain is changing as we speak, and we're getting more and more flooding issues, and this is something that needs to be taken into consideration because that creates a great deal of unsafety for this facility. Thank you.
The next two names are Tinique Thio and John Brodowski.
My name is Tinique Thio. That's spelled T I N E K E T H I O, and I live in Princeton, New Jersey, which is in, sorry, sorry.
Sorry.
I live in Princeton, New Jersey, which is in Mercer County, just across the river from you. And you know what? As pointed out by several other New Jerseians, we in New Jersey have enough problems, and we don't need the help of a dangerous facility owned by a faraway entity. I would also like to support the other people who have spoken of climate change. And I remind you that in North Carolina, they had two 1,000-year floods in, yeah, within two years of each other. So everybody knows that the FEMA maps need to be seriously updated. And you could say, okay, well, you know, that's North Carolina, that's far away, that's where the hurricanes hit. But research done by Carrie Emanuel at MIT has shown two years ago that hurricane landfalls have been moving up the coast at a pace of 30 miles per year. Now, no, 30 miles per decade. Even I can walk faster than that, but, you know, the signs are that this facility is planned here for a very long time, and so you need to be planning at that timescale. And I think that you are asking all the right questions about the floodplain and, you know, what do you do when that happens? I want to commend you for hitting it where it really matters. I think, and I want to commend, I want to congratulate the local voters for having such a good sense, for having voted these guys onto the board, and I hope that you will use both your intelligence and your common sense to turn down this application.
Following Mr. Brodowski will be Jim Morrissey.
J O H N B R O D O W S K I. I am the Deputy Mayor for the City of Bordentown. I've had the opportunity to meet all of you in the past. This has been an ongoing issue for about five years now, regardless of what the Elcon officials would like. The crowd to believe they've had ample time to get this right, and this is yet another example of how they're unprepared for obvious questions. So first of all, I would like to thank the Board of Supervisors for giving this item the attention that it deserves, the seriousness and the weight that it deserves. So thank you for hearing us all out from both sides of the river. Thank you to the Planning Commission for Falls Township who turned down this proposal just recently, unanimously, by the way. And I'd also like to take a minute to thank all of the engaged citizenry in the entire region. A young man earlier tonight asked Elcon why they chose this site. I think it's because they took a look at what's already here and thought it would be easy, but the residents in this area and the people in this area have shown by hanging out till quarter to 10:00 tonight that they do not want this here, and they're willing to put in the work. So as mentioned, I had a chance to meet you guys previously, and I know that your heart's in the right place to serve for the betterment of your community and to act on behalf of your constituents. So I'm confident you're going to turn this thing down. And what I have, one thing to ask of Elcon is, respect the decision. Let's not drag this out in lawsuit after lawsuit. It doesn't need to happen. We are not going away, and no matter what happens after tonight, respect the decision from the supervisors, and, you know, thank you. I appreciate it.
Just before Mr. Morrissey speaks, just to be clear, he will be, because we've reached our hour and a half, he will be the last speaker. So don't forget to spell your name, Mr. Morrissey.
Good evening. James, J A M E S, Morrissey, M O R R I S S E Y. I come here tonight as a resident of Ben Salem and also as a member of Anchor Yacht Club, delicated in Bristol Borough on the Delaware River. I am also an officer with the Delaware River Yachtsman's League, and I'm also on the Board of Governors with the Chesapeake Bay Yachtsman's Association. I come here, I've been here for 40 years, maybe 45. I remember growing up along the Delaware River, utilizing its resources, fishing, swimming. As I got older, got into boating, joined a boat club here, raised my kids along the Delaware River. They've enjoyed boating, fishing, swimming without any concerns of anything harming them. Now, I don't know if a lot of people remember, but back in the '70s, Delaware River was so toxic that the fish that we see coming up today could not get past the Philadelphia area, because there was no oxygen in the water. And it took decades to clean the Delaware River to where at least we have a waterway that is now clean. We utilize it. We utilize it in our recreation. We utilize it in our jobs. I'm here tonight not to repeat everything that's been said, and I agree with what's been said. What I am requesting, on behalf of my organizations, is that the supervisors perform the duties of your elected offices, respect and represent residents of Falls Township, represent the communities that are your partners and your neighbors, and come together and with a resounding vote, vote thumbs down to Elcon. Thank you.
Mr. Markey, do you need a break? No? No? Okay. All right, before we vote, I'm going to ask a favor, if it's okay to do that. The township does have about, literally about five minutes of business to conduct after our vote. I know the hour's late, but if we waited for everybody to leave their seats and go out, we probably would spend more time waiting for you than we would actually spend just doing what we need to do. So we promise to be quick, if you wouldn't mind just holding on and indulging us a little bit. That's what we ask, that's all. All right, we do have a motion and a second on the table. Now, to be clear, the motion that was made by Mr. Brodowski was to deny the preliminary land development application. It was seconded by one of the other Jeffs. I didn't know who got to it first. Just to be clear, a motion, a vote yes is to, a motion is a vote to deny. Just to be clear, a motion, so a vote that's yes in favor is a vote to deny. At this time, motion made and seconded, all those in favor of the motion, vote aye?
Yes.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. We do have, as I said, I want to begin by thanking the staff here, professionals, for all the time and effort they put in, the supervisors for all the time and effort they A reminder to those involved, you probably don't need it, but I'll give it anyway, that there is a second phase to this, you know, project, which is the DEP application. DEP has yet to rule on this. They do not have to take what we've done into account. We believe it's wise if they do. We, I would ask, having reviewed myself personally, the eight binders made up the Phase II application, I do have some points I'd like to make, I'm hoping can be incorporated by the solicitors into a communication to DEP. Binder one of the project, Section 5.3, states the company, quote, "Sent notification letters to local water authority users of the Delaware River," end quote. It then lists the companies who were sent notification letters. Lower Bucks Joint Municipal Authority was not one of them. Lower Bucks Joint Municipal Authority was not one of them. Binder two, 269A.47, states there are four fire companies in Falls Township. Falls Township has three fire companies. Appendix A-5, Figure 16C-2 fails to identify Quaker Penn Park or the Falls Township Community Park on a map that's supposed to include parks near the site. Figure 16C-3 fails to identify Pensbury Manor as a historic site near the site. Attachment, attachment 9.1, 9-1, page six, mentions tipping fees paid to Falls. AlCon is not a facility that would be paying tipping fees. Attachment 9-1, page eight, establishes causation between economic difficulties in Marsville and the former U.S. Steel operations and waste management operations, yet finds no causation between those operations and economic conditions in Falls Township, which seems counterfactual considering those facilities are in Falls Township. Fiscal impact study, pages four through 11, uses an inaccurate common level ratio for evaluating the assumed property values of the completed AlCon project. This inaccurate ratio inflates the economic benefits to Falls Township. And binder three, Appendix A-8, copies of letters and certified letter receipts to water authorities notified by AlCon, again, does not include any notification to Lower Bucks Joint Municipal Authority. Appendix A-10, the meeting minutes of 12:22:15 of a meeting between AlCon and DEP recommends AlCon make contact with local fire companies. To the best of our knowledge and the knowledge of the fire marshal, that was never done. Section G, attachment seven, emergency scenarios, lists local hospitals but does not list Capital Health, which is actually the closest hospital. The response to the technical survey, binder one, Section C, Appendix C-3, Radiation Protection Monitoring Plan, page one, does not list Falls Township as an emergency contact. Binder two, Section G, Appendix G-1, Preliminary Contingency Plan, lists Fairliss Hills Fire Company as the primary contact when it should be Falls Township Fire Company. It's their, it's their field, their area of coverage. It also does not include the Falls Township Fire Marshal as one of the contacts. So if I could ask for those to be included. Thank you. Mr. Gray has a couple of items, I think two items to address. Mr. Gray?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just two items. The board has asked to consider authorization for Jones Engineering Associates to submit paperwork to the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Association for a possible grant opportunity as part of the bridge reconstruction on South Olds Boulevard by the golf course.
Okay. All right. Questions or comments, Mr. Jones?
No, we discussed this.
No? Yeah. We're belief the south, the bridge over the South Olds Boulevard, there's a culvert underneath which is failing. Our belief is that by working with FEMA, there is a grant available for us to lessen flooding issues in that part of Falls Township in cooperation with FEMA and the county, and obtain money that would help pay for that renovation of that bridge. So all in favor of giving Jones Engineering that authority?
Sure. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Secondly, the police department secured a quote for the purchase of five new Date 9/11 tablets for use in the police vehicles. This quote is in the amount of $26,334.80. It's from Broadcast Microwave Services, Date 9/11 products. This amount has been included in the 2019 budget and is included on the Co-Stars list. Board has asked to consider this purchase at this time.
Comments or questions from board members? Mr. Gray?
These are just computers for the new police cars, correct?
That's correct.
No, that's all.
None? None. Okay. All right, $26,334.80. I probably should have asked for public comment. Any public comment? We've had a lot of that. All right, is there a motion in favor, $26,334.80? So moved.
Second.
Second. Mrs. Pollan?
Mr. Gray? Yes.
Mr. Brodowski?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Mr. Ted?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
I should have also turned to our solicitor, I'm sorry, Mr. Gray, go ahead. Do you want more thing? That's all I have. Thank you. Mr. Clark, mean of summary of your executive session from earlier?
The board held an executive session prior to this meeting to discuss various personnel matters and two matters involving collective bargaining agreements.
Okay, thank you. And finally, I just, well, we do have a crowd here. I wanted to special thanks to Mr. Brodowski. This past weekend, there was the Third Annual Touch a Truck Event, which is pretty unique here in Falls, and this year it did raise...
We raised right around $12,000 this year. So all the money raised over the course of the last couple of weeks... All the money raised over the last couple of weeks for our one-day free family event where our kids got to explore on multiple vehicles. The money will be donated to the Barkin Family Healing Hearts Foundation, which keeps all the money donated to that charity in the, in our local area in Lower Bucks County and helps families who are really absolutely in need.
Any board comment? Board comment? Board comment? Okay.
I do have one comment. It's excellent job, Mr. Harvey, running this meeting and the past few. Some of these AlCon meetings have been very contentious, but they're an excellent job.
All right. Appreciate all the input, appreciate all the comments and all the energy, obviously, again. Obviously, again, the DEP, the DEP has yet to make a ruling, and so that obviously, and I do, actually, we want to make one correction, one point. Over the past several months, I apologize, past several months, a lot of people have talked about Lakewood, New Jersey, Lakewood, New Jersey, Lakewood, New Jersey. I spoke to someone in Lakewood, New Jersey. Lakewood, New Jersey did not deny this. It was actually the New Jersey DEP. Lakewood, New Jersey never saw it. It never got past the DEP. So that gives you an idea, okay, of where the fight needs to be. Do we have motion to adjourn?
Sure. Move. Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.